Good evening, everybody. I'm Mayor Jen Wallison and welcome to the City Council's May 23 regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers. For those in virtual attendance, please note that there is a globe icon near the hand feature on your screen. This will allow you to listen to tonight's meeting in Spanish. Our interpreters this evening are Ashley Nunez, Gilberto Martin Del Campo, and I want to thank you all for your time and services today. Muchas gracias.
Bueno, buenas tardes. Para los que nos acompañan en persona aquí en la cámara, por favor tenemos interpretación al español. Si pueden pasar por la mesa de atrás el que necesite interpretación al español. Nuestros interpretes por Zoom de esta noche son Ashley Nunez y Gilberto Martín Del Campo. Las interpretes en persona somos Glenda León y Gabriela Saya Salom. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. So please note tonight that our public speaker time for public comment may be limited depending on the number of speakers that we have for each item. First, we're going to go into emergency circumstances. Vice Mayor Taylor is using Assembly Bill 2449 Emergency Circumstances to participate in tonight's meeting. Government Code Section 549, 54.2, and City Council Policy CC 20012 permit non-agendized items to be added to the agenda only if the City Council makes findings that, one, the need to consider the item arose after the posting of the agenda, and two, there is a need to take immediate action at this meeting of the City Council. These findings must be approved by a four-fifth vote. If less than five members of the City Council are present, the findings require a unanimous vote of those present. The item, use of AB 2449 Emergency Circumstances, arose after the posting of the agenda, and there is a need to take immediate action at this meeting. Vice Mayor Taylor, please provide a general description of the circumstances relating to your need to appear remotely and disclose whether any other people over 18 years old are present in the room and the general nature of your relationship with the individual. And for those, for Vice Mayor Taylor and for those members of the public, this is a state law. We are not doing this out of our own curiosity. And so I thanks Vice Mayor Taylor for going through this requirement. So please, Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Wallison and council members. I am participating remotely as a result of illness, and there is no one present that is over 18 in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we need a motion and a second to add the use of AB 2449 Emergency Circumstances to tonight's agenda.
I make a motion. I second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Wallison. So I have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Dower and a second by City Council Member Nash to add the use of AB 2449 Emergency Circumstances to tonight's agenda. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Dower.
Yes.
City Council Member Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Wallison.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Council Member Combs absent. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, as I stated earlier, this is a two-part process, which again, we are not doing because we want to, but we are required to. Can I please get a motion and a second to approve the remote participation under AB 2449 Emergency Circumstances for Vice Mayor Taylor?
I say move. And I second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Nash and a second by City Council Member Dower to approve remote participation under AB 2449 Emergency Circumstances for Vice Mayor Taylor. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Dower.
Yes.
City Council Member Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Wallison.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Council Member Combs absent. Thank you.
So with that, welcome to the meeting, Vice Mayor Taylor. And I would like to introduce our other City Council members and staff present. As mentioned, Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor is here. City Council Member Drew Combs will be joining us momentarily. Council Member Maria Dorr is here and Council Member Betsy Nash is here. Sitting at the staff table, we have our City Manager Justin Murphy, our Assistant City Manager Stephen Stoltay, and our City Attorney Neera Dordy. And of course, our City Clerk Judy Heron, who is helping lead this meeting with me. So City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how this meeting will proceed?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Wallison. And again, echoing a welcome to our May 23 City Council meeting. For those of you in attendance in person, if you wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, when the mayor calls for comment on that item, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. For those of you participating virtually, after the mayor calls for comment on the item or calls for public comment on the item you wish to provide comment on, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press a star nine at that time. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you so much. So we're now moving on to C Agenda Review. Agenda Review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council Member Reports. Does the City Council wish to pull or modify any agenda item? And actually, I'm going to jump in first and say that we are reordering F2, which is our poetry with our wonderful youth attendees tonight. We are having that first, then we will be moving on to our proclamations and then having our public comment. Did I get that right, City Clerk Heron?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Wallison.
Thank you very much. So those were the reorderings that I'm doing. So public comment will come after poetry and our proclamation. Are there any other pulls? I see Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Wallison. I have just a comment on H2. A question on H3 and H4. I'm sorry. And H5.
Can you repeat the, which one was the question versus the comment?
So I have a question on H2. I have a comment on H3. A comment on H4, and then a few questions on H5.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Are there any other agenda modifications or consent item issues? Okay, thank you very much. And we will get to that when we get to that. So now moving on to D, which is our report out from closed session. I'd like to introduce our City Attorney Neera Dordy for a report out from the May 9 closed session. City Attorney Dordy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no reportable action.
Thank you, City Attorney Dordy. With that, we are moving on to our presentation, which is very exciting. It is fabulous to see so many people in the audience who are here to share their beautiful poetry and to help celebrate poetry in our community. And with that, our next presentation is the Menlo Park Youth Poetry Voices. Tonight, we are showcasing youth creativity and expression through the Youth Poetry Voices Initiative. And here to make the presentation and introduce our youth poets is our Director of Library and Community Services, Sean Reinhardt. Please, Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna, thank you. We're gonna move this aside. Joining me up here this evening is Elise Stein, who's the president of the Menlo Park Library Foundation, which is one of our cosponsors on this activity. And I think with that, Elise, if you could use this microphone and say a few words, and then I'll help you here bring our youth poets up to read their poems.
You don't want my back. It's okay. I'm gonna say so. So, thank you, Sean. I'm Elise Stein. I head up the Library Foundation. And we're delighted to be able to help sponsor the Youth Poetry Voices Contest. We accepted applications from childrens in grades 2 to 12 and had over 15 schools respond, which is really fantastic. This is the second or third time we've run this contest, and we hope it just gets bigger every year. The kids live or attend school in Menlo Park, and we asked them to write about the theme, "My Library." Earlier this evening, we had a reception for them. We gave them all wonderful poets' ribbons, and I'd like one, and I hope they're all wearing them here. And we acknowledged all the participants, and they're very proud, picture-taking parents. This was a partnership with the Library Foundation, who provided the prizes for the notable poems and the honorable mentions in the three grade levels. The poems were judged by Betsy Halliday from the Library Foundation, the former San Mateo County poet laureate Eileen Castaneda, who sent her regards and her appreciation of the whole contest, very supportive. Jackie Sebrian, who is here this evening, she stands up. She was a former, there she is, former Library Commission Officer and Commissioner, and she's currently on the Complete Streets Council. Thank you for all your service, Jackie. And the Menlo Park Librarian Liesel Jackson. So that was the board. And everybody read all the poems, the whole board, as well as the poet laureate. We have, for your delight, we have many of the poets here tonight, and I'm going to ask four of the young poets to come up and read their poems. And I'm going to ask them all to stand here, and we'll start with the youngest grades first. So would you each come up? Zoya Carr, where are you? If you would come up and be prepared to read your poem. Thank you.
For Zoya.
Yeah. Just wait a minute. Shreya Malhatra. Shreya. Thank you. These are the grades 7s and 8s. In the grade 4 to 6, we had Serena Tang. And the grade 2 to 3, why don't you come over here, Serena? And the grade 2 to 3 was Anya Lee.
And when you're speaking, please make sure you speak into the microphone. So it's, thank you.
Now, Sean's got a microphone. We're gonna start with, yeah, we're gonna start with Anya Lee.
Check out some books. Don't worry about the looks. Take a trip to the library for the books you'll just carry. Put them on hold, just like I told. Take a trip to the libraries for the books you'll just carry. Get a library card that you won't have to guard. Take a trip to the library for the books you'll just carry.
On page 2.
Look on the shelf all by yourself. Take a trip to the library for the books you'll just carry. Every subject, do not reject. Take a trip to the library for the books you'll just carry. Praise the dear authors from switch to history of other. Take a trip to the library for the books you'll just carry.
The library is a fair, diverse, welcoming sanctuary for all stories, all voices, of all colors, sizes, genres, forms, personalities. The librarian can find any writing in this story haven. That 5x6-inch article buried in the World War section, or that brand-new science comic partly built on content fiction. Fingers brush against leather, against smooth paper, against crinkled sides, as legs pass through shelves, through rooms, through halls. Anticipation in the searchers, hoping to find the right book. Anticipation in the books, hoping to find the right searcher. Library itself has no smell, so that each book, each scent of each book, is the true fragrance, the pure voice of that story. Like the different strings of yarn that are the contrasts of each book, the library itself is a melting pot of furniture. Tan wooden and leather-covered chairs, low LED and high circular lights, tiled and flat ceilings, red brick pillars, comfy beanbags that go, huh. Mysterious rug with no pattern. And now I am off to the library, a castle of books so contrary. I have so much to do, but I'm happy that's true, because I'm going to the Menlo Park Library.
Tang from grades, what grade?
4th.
4 to 6, grade 4 to 6. Now, we're going to have Zoya. Let's see, Zoya Carr, who is the 7th grader.
The red brick walls of my favorite second home is where, in a perfect world, I would live. I would wander through the teen section during the day, letting my gaze dance along the spines of well-loved novels and hot-off-the-presses, brand-new untouched fictions alike. When I would browse the collection of fiction in the back of the room, the room with the seed library and the clock during the night, and sometimes, all the times, I will find some book that makes my heart leap with anticipation hardly waiting until I can settle at home in the library. There is so much genuine, a word I read, that refers to Roman times, when a father would bounce a baby on his knee to declare them as his heir. Potential in the library. On those days when time seems inconsequential and the day stretches limitless in front of you, I sometimes wonder, whose idea, glorious and in simplicity as it was, the first library was? Whom should I thank? Whom should I thank for my library, for my favorite second home and its red brick walls?
Shreya, which is, Shreya is Malhatra from the 8th grade. And you're tall enough for the large microphone.
The library is shrouded in mystery, for dangerous creatures live inside. They prowl in corners and on shelves. They come in every shape and size. When I walk through the doors, not knowing what I will find, the creatures watch very closely, sensing an opportunity, an open mind. Then one of the creatures pounce, and it captures my gaze. I treat it as if it is precious, not knowing that it could steal days. I stay inside of the library, for the creature has caught its prey. It could be minutes or even hours before I again see the light of day. The creature sits in my hand, and I decipher what it says. I coax out its darkest secrets until I am no longer its prey. After many hours have passed, I cradle the creature and stare at this once foreign feared being. Now gentle forth story has been shared. Thank you.
Could we get a photo opportunity if our young poets would just kind of come right on over here? And maybe if the parents would like to take a photo of the young poets, if the council wouldn't mind?
With your other poets.
Oh, and all the other poets who are here in the audience tonight, please do come forward. And let's hear it for all of our young poets. It's incredible. Please do come forward. Please do, please, please. All of your poems were amazing. We only had so much time to do poems tonight, but we do want to recognize you for your incredible voices and words. Yes.
One else. One more round.
Right. One more round of applause. Your first taste of paparazzi. Thank you, young poets. April was National Poetry Month. This was our way to bring youth voices forward during that month. I also just quickly want to put in a plug for Menlo Park Library. It's kicking off our summer reading game. It's all summer long, where children are encouraged to read books and receive prizes for reading over the course of the summer. And of course, helps them keep their reading skills sharp. We have a kickoff on Saturday, June 3 at the library at noon. And you can sign up for the summer reading game at menlopark.gov/summerreading. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, and thank you to all of the children who were here tonight, who participated. We know a lot more of our community participated. Your words really moved us. You made me want to go to the library. So very inspiring. Thank you so much. I think Council Member Dorr, do you want to say anything? Okay. Okay. Thank you. So with that very upbeat presentation, we are going to move on to something a little more serious with our proclamation this evening. And actually, City Clerk Heron, I'm realizing now that we didn't call for public comment on the library presentation. So can we public, call for public comment now on both of our presentations and proclamations?
Yes. Okay, so if we have any public comment for our presentation, item F2, Menlo Park Youth Poetry Voices, if you are participating in person, please complete one of those speaker cards at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our presentation, item F2. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you. And City Clerk Heron, was that also for our proclamation as well?
Let's go ahead and open it up to.
We are, we are now moving on to F1, which is our proclamation on Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F1, our proclamation for gun violence awareness, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. And our first speaker will be Leah Elkins on F1.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Oh, hello, little. There we go. Can you hear me? Okay. I wanted to thank the City Council and Council Member Combs, welcome, the rest of the City Council and Mayor Wallison for issuing this proclamation that you are about to issue on Gun Violence Awareness Day. Gun violence is an ongoing crisis in our nation, as we all know. And although the terrifying and headline-grabbing incidents of mass shootings have not yet touched Menlo Park, we are all too aware that a tragedy can occur anywhere and anytime in a country where guns outnumber people. We must commit to fully addressing the causes of violence. We need more funding for mental health interventions and for community-based programs that address the issues of poverty and crime. But the reality is that the majority of gun deaths in America are suicides. In 2021, over 26,000 people died by suicide with a gun. Research shows that many suicide attempts are unsuccessful and that the person goes on to recover from their crisis and to never make another attempt. When a gun is the method of choice, however, the result is usually fatal. Encouraging firearms owners in our city to lock up their weapons and help reduce, will help reduce the availability of the lethal method, of this lethal method of self-harm. Guns would also be less vulnerable to theft and less successful to children who can easily cause tragic accidents. The solution to the gun violence in our country will take many years and many approaches to reach, but there are proven ways to reduce this all-too-common danger. Bringing awareness to the issue via this proclamation and with the events that will occur on the first weekend in June is one way to push the conversation forward and to bring closer the day that we can live with the security that others in our peer nations do, free from the fear of our own or a loved one's senseless demise. Our group, Moms Demand Action, is just one of many who are working on this issue. Please get involved in whatever way speaks to you. One place to start could be our upcoming March Across the Golden Gate Bridge. Please come up to me or one of the other Moms Demand Action volunteers that are here and find out more, or you can visit momsdemandaction.org. And again, I thank you and all the council for this proclamation.
Thank you for your comment. Go right up ahead, and if you can state your name for the record.
Yes. My name is Paula Machoza, and I'm a resident of Menlo Park. Thank you very much for this proclamation to the mayor and the council and the city manager and assistant and city attorney and everybody at City Menlo Park. It's very important that people become more and more aware that gun violence, it is an epidemic. And we do know, and the reason I'm here, and I was not supposed to speak, that's why I have nothing prepared, is because I just heard those kids, right, with the poetry, and I became very emotional about it, because I don't know if any of them are still here, but it's our responsibility that they feel safe in this country. And we can do it. We know how to do it. We know that, you know, laws and regulation around guns are very successful. So, thank you very much, and I hope to see everybody wearing orange on this coming, June 1, June weekend, so that everybody knows that it's a problem of our society, and we can all do something right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And this is the final call for public comment on items F1 and F2. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron, and thank you for those moving public comments. I do want to remind members of the public, we have quite a few agenda items this evening, and I would like to request for the rest of the evening that people in the audience refrain from emoting, either through clapping. Not everyone always agrees with everyone at council meetings, and so it's just our protocol to ask that you neither clap nor boo. But we are appreciative of the comments that everybody makes, really. So with that, I will go ahead and read the proclamation recognizing Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than citizens of other high-income countries with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas California has an average of 3,253 gun deaths every year, a crisis that costs the state $1,060 per resident each year for a total of $4 billion, of which $1 billion is paid by taxpayers. And whereas cities across the nation, including Menlo Park, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas, in June 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 2, 2023, to recognize the 26th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, born on June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange to tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas, the idea was inspired by Hadia's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, symbolizing the value of human life. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 2, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them and encourage. and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our families and communities safe. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Jen Wallace, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the city council and city, hereby declare the first Friday in June, June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. So to accept this proclamation is our guns, our Moms Demand Action local mom, Leah Elkins. So Leah, I would like you to come up and accept this proclamation on behalf of the city council. And I did go, you can go on Etsy. I got my orange shirt, so it's not too late. Okay. I don't know, do you sit? Okay. I'll squat.
What's doing? One, two. Three. One more. One, two, and three. Very much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you for allowing us. I know there's people waiting to speak to reorder those items so the kids could go and have their dinner and get to bed. So we are now moving on to E, which is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate times for members of the public to address the city council on the other agenda sections. We've already covered presentations and proclamations. I will also be calling for comment on the consent calendar, public hearings, regular business, and informational items. So with that, City Clerk Karen, can you please call for general public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallace. And so at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If you're participating online via Zoom, you can raise that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine at this time. Okay, so Mayor Wallace, and we're currently at 11 speakers.
Okay, we, as I mentioned earlier, when we have a lot of comments, we sometimes reduce the number of minutes, so we're going to do two minutes for each speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. So our first speaker will be John Butler, followed by Stephen Salt.
Thank you, Mayor Wallace and Honorable City Council for allowing me to speak again on this matter. I was here on May 9th originally, and my comments are on May, I'm Mental Health Month, and your proclamation reads, "Whereas in 2021, the Surgeon General issued a health advisory on the youth mental health crisis that has been further exposed by COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas one out of every 24 Californians with a serious mental health condition have difficulty functioning in everyday life. If left untreated, have life expectancies 25 years shorter than the general population. Whereas every day, millions of people face stigma related to mental health, substance use conditions, and may feel isolated and alone for years before receiving any help. And communities of color with mental health conditions are less likely to receive mental health services compared to their white counterparts." And finally, whereas in 2022, Menlo Park joined the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, which is made up of 16 cities in San Mateo County, where mayors across the 20 cities in San Mateo County have come together with the mission of promoting awareness and of access to mental health resources in their communities. So this proclamation describes me, the way I was, and sometimes am today, and I'm grateful to be a resident of Menlo Park, where the mayor and the city council speak, or people like myself. I have lived experience with suicide, substance use, and other challenges, and I am grateful today to be a survivor and to actually live in victory over my circumstances. Thanks very much.
Stephen, you're up, followed by John Secat.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Wallace and council members. Turned up a little bit. My name is Stephen Salt. I'm a employee of the city of Menlo Park. Well, I've been here a relatively short time of about nine months. I've had the opportunity of working with pretty much nearly everybody in the city. I travel, you know, travel through all the different departments and divisions. And the reason I want to come and speak today is, you know, one of the sentiments that's been kind of echoed lately is people are feeling overworked and stressed out. We're having a hard time finding and retaining talent, and it's kind of having a knock-on effect throughout the city currently. So I know we're undergoing labor negotiations, and, you know, it's always a contentious subject, you know, city employees kind of versus the city, but I really feel that, you know, we're the lifeblood and the heart of what makes the city, you know, function and work. And, you know, I just wanted to speak out and, you know, for maybe some of the other members who don't have the eloquence to do so. You know, here we have a lot of talented and great employees who have been working very hard to keep the city running despite, you know, having, you know, issue with retention and all that. But, you know, I just wanted to, you know, ask you to keep it, you know, in mind that, you know, with the pandemic and inflation, it's been really hard on a lot of people, you know, to keep going under these conditions. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. All right, our next speaker is John Secat, followed by Susanna Fong. John, you should be able to unmute your end at this time.
Hello.
All right, go right ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Secat, and I'm your full-time planning and check engineer in the building division. I served in the military for 10 years, keeping our world safe. And I am using my skill set and experiences to answer the call here in Menlo Park. My primary duty is to help the city enforce the California building standards adopted in the municipal code. And these standards ensure that homes, buildings, and parks are safe, are structurally sound, and are energy efficient, which contributes to Menlo Park being a wonderful place to live and work. To keep the city humming, it takes people and money. We have talented and dedicated staff who continue to provide excellent service to external and internal customers. Most staff here have been here before the pandemic. Many have persevered through the COVID protocols, and those of us who care for the city are still here as we emerge from the post-pandemic. City revenues from property taxes continue to grow, while another revenue source, permitting fees, trends upward due to our department processing more building permits than ever before. We are a team, as a team, have put in sweat equity into making these processes, new processes, work while maintaining positive customer satisfaction, all this while being understaffed. The city recognizes that we are understaffed, so much so that financial reports have highlighted that our initiatives aimed at attracting and retaining talent. And some of the working days are challenging for morale. Many of us have more work than there are hours in a day to complete. My military experiences taught me that leadership defines the mission and that leadership takes care of the talent to execute that mission. Thank you for listening. We appreciate your time and hope you will consider the points expressed tonight as we continue to negotiate for the next labor contract. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and our next speaker is Susanna Fong, followed by Caitlin Shannon. And this will, for Susanna Fong, we have donated time from Keep Dowdeli?
Yeah, Dowdell. Thank you. Hi, can you hear me? All right. Good evening, fellow members of the council, our fellow colleagues, and members of the public. This year marks my 20th year of employment with the city of Menlo Park. I work in police communications, and I stand before you today, not only as an employee, but as a union member, mother, and patron of Menlo Park businesses for the last 20-plus years. During these 20 years, my colleagues and I have faced many personal and professional challenges, made countless sacrifices to fulfill our duties to the best of our abilities, and have persevered through countless staffing shortages throughout our tenure. The reason for my being here today is to reflect upon the last few years and highlight the struggles we currently face due to inflation and economic challenges of living in an area where costs of living are extremely high. That sentiment is echoed by my peers, and we implore you to take several factors into consideration as we navigate more uncertain times together. At a time where work from home was possible for many city positions, many of us have not been afforded those opportunities based on the nature of our positions. Through record rains, floods, extreme staffing shortages, and a pandemic, we showed up and worked diligently to provide critical services to the Menlo Park community. We are asking for some reprieve from staffing shortages and additional financial resources to adequately reflect the current market rates so that we can attract, hire, and retain the current talent pool we have. We have many vacant positions within the city, and unless our wages and benefits are competitive with current market rates and neighboring municipalities, and we offer creative solutions to retain our valued employees, we will continue to lose opportunities to retain skilled and knowledgeable employees or potential employees to agencies that lessen commutes and offer incentives. Other agencies or recruiting firms know this and regularly mail flyers and recruitment information. Working during prolonged staffing shortages adds to burnout and low morale, and the extra duties are either not completed or added to the workload of current staff. As disaster service workers, if many of us cannot afford to live closer or respond to work during times of disasters, this delays emergency and essential services we provide to the public. In a time when climate change and environmental impacts affects us all, the ability to commute lesser distances should be considered. Our physical and mental health, in addition to work and family life balance, is also affected by one-to-two-hour commutes. While we understand the need to be fiscally responsible, we also want to stress the importance of working together to find solutions that enable us to perform our duties while well-rested and assured that we can better provide for our families. I would like to express my gratitude for your time, service to the Menlo Park community, and I'm proud of the work we currently perform under some very trying times. We want to continue to make positive impacts in Menlo Park and strongly believe that we can continue to do so, provided with ample support and resources. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Caitlin Shannon, followed by Sokni Sai.
Good evening, council members and city of Menlo Park residents and my fellow SEIU members. My name is Caitlin Shannon, and I am a city of Menlo Park employee here. I will be making comments this evening, not only as a city employee, but as a member of the community development team. My position here is a permit technician, and my roles and duties are pertaining to the facilitation of building permits. I'm speaking today to highlight the inequity of this position and the problem it poses to city retention efforts. These inequities include inaccessibility to internal promotion and unparalleled pay wages. Throughout many jurisdictions within the Bay Area, there are multiple opportunities for internal promotion for my specific position. Here, there are no positional tiers to advance and no advocating for internal promotions inside or outside of the team. Instead, we are given an Employee Excellence Teamwork Award from dating from 2008. One of my fellow colleagues, who has over 15 years of knowledge and expertise, has no opportunity to seek a promotion that she rightfully deserves. As an example, the county of San Mateo offers a permit technician two and three. In January, there was a completed classification and compensation study. Within this study, my position, along with many others, were not represented. This point points out to the lack of transparency and raises questions to as why my position, along with others, were not included. The city has published financial statements where it's recognized that this disparity exists. As a current employee who is responsible for fostering revenue for the city of Menlo Park, it is imperative that these items of inequity are addressed. As a millennial who considers the other jobs, opportunities within the Bay Area, working for the city is currently unmotivating. The city can provide more opportunities for growth in this area, and in turn, retention then becomes a standard across city employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Sokni Sai, followed by Danny O'Connor.
Hello, council, Mayor Wallace and the rest of council and staff. Some of you may know me well, more than others. Sokni Sai, IT analyst, too. I've been with the city for five years, gone on a six in August. Just want to come here and let the council know and the public know that I would enjoy working for the city of Menlo Park. Although I commute far, come to work, those guys in the back, they're awesome to work with. And I think it would be great for you guys to get to know some of them. If you can raise your hand, staff in the back. Just want to recognize there was a staff. And as we move forward with the current labor negotiations, we want to continue to partner with the city to move it forward and try to come up with solutions that's plaguing the city, housing inequity. I think equity gets tossed around a lot, and I think it's important that the employees get some equity as well. And we can address those things, and I hope that moving forward that we do address and spread more equity. I think the city is in great hands with the leadership throughout the years and with the city manager. I think we'll continue to be in good hands, so thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. So next up is Danny O'Connor, with donated time from Alan Acker, followed by Whit Lloyd.
Good evening. I'll start by saying that no one ever expects to be-
Danny, apologize for the interruption. You might want to get a little closer to the mic. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
A little better, yes.
I'll start by saying that no one ever expects to become rich working for local government, and employees do not seek notoriety for doing their jobs. However, your employees do have a reasonable expectation that we are considered and acknowledged for the work that ensures the city government offices operate efficiently. This efficiency is exhibited daily as employees work to provide services and complete projects that promote the quality of life expected by Menlo Park residents. The performance of Menlo Park employees demonstrates our dedication, not only to the community that we serve, but also to you as a representation and an extension of what you all commit to the Menlo Park community. Many California cities have introduced ways to promote additional employee compensation and benefits. Ideas include significantly higher education reimbursement or student loan forgiveness for long-term employees, limited matching contributions to re- for long-term employees, limited matching contributions to retirement plans or thrift savings plans, and long-term medical insurance after retirement without the requirement that accumulated sick leave be leveraged as a means for employee to obtain medical insurance. Menlo Park has neglected to look for additional solutions that reward or retain employees and has met most salary increases with an increase in the cost of benefits to your employees. This not only results in lost opportunities to show that employees are valued, but reinforces the disregard that has been shown to employees, often minimizing our efforts. While city council searches for solutions to protect residents from the sound of train horns at a significant cost, the basic needs of Menlo Park employees who contribute to the success of such projects are neglected. Employees work both public-facing and behind-the-scenes to make positive impact on the community as a whole and every community member, including all of you. We operate by sharing additional responsibilities as the city council affects efficiencies citywide. And while we do benefit from having a sense of job stability, you have also come to benefit from the many contributions that we make on a daily basis, as well as the past concessions that we have made to ensure a healthy city government. Menlo Park employees are relied upon to cooperate during crises and collaborate to solve problems, but there is a continued collapse in demonstrating appreciation for the functions that benefit everyone. I ask that you work as diligently to ensure an increased level of support for employees as you do to ensure the comfort of your residents, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. So next is Whit Lloyd, followed by Dimitri Katsaros.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson, council members, fellow city employees, and members of the public. I was up here just about a month ago talking about a similar situation. My name's Whit Lloyd, and I am the Ask Me President, and I'm here representing our members this evening. We wanted to express our support for our SEIU coworkers and their effort for fair and equitable wages. Thank you for the fellow coworkers behind me. You've done a wonderful job speaking this evening. One thing I did want to point out to the council as well, this was sent to you by our Ask Me rep a few weeks ago, but I did want to put it on the record that the City of Menlo Park cost of living increases have fallen 1.6% behind CPU or CPIU on an average, or per year, on an average of the last fourteen years. So I'm going to restate that. They've fallen behind 1.6% over Bay Area CPI each year over the last fourteen years. There's a total of 23% that our wages are behind, have fallen behind CPU or CPI, I'm sorry. So our wage increases have been slowly, slowly falling behind Bay Area CPI. And again, that we feel that this is a contributing factor to the staffing shortages that we're seeing within the city ranks. And we hope that this was going to be addressed throughout the upcoming negotiations as well. We want to thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Dimitri, followed by Sally Cole.
Hi, City Council, City Staff. Thanks for having us here tonight. I just wanted to get these on the public record and hand them over to you. We were able, before this meeting tonight, to collect 136 signatures of my coworkers, just asking for equity and fair wages. I've been here at the city since 2010, and I'm your municipal water utility worker. So I've been called from council chambers, from geysers, and I work Public Works to respond to any event that happens that takes me away from my family to serve your family. So we're just asking that you guys show us a little appreciation for what we're more than willing and glad to serve this community. We love serving your families in this community, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. You can bring that right over. Thank you. So next up is Sally Cole, followed by Katie Baruzzi.
Hello, good evening. I'm Sally Cole with the Complete Streets Commission, and I am up here with just a quick ask of the city council. I'm asking the city council to consider fast-tracking the pilot of safety improvements that were improved by the commission to the intersection at Menlo and University. This is the intersection right outside Drager's. In recent days and weeks, I've witnessed events with my own eyes that have made me believe that this needs to be addressed as soon as possible, the safety hazards at the intersection. Yesterday morning, I walked from my house down to Drager's, and as I turned the corner, I saw an ambulance and a paramedic at that intersection and some placement as well, and I immediately knew that there had been a collision. One of the reasons I made that immediate conclusion is that in the staff report to the commission at our March 8th meeting, they let us know that this intersection has the single largest number of pedestrian collisions in all of Menlo Park. In 2022, there were seventeen recorded pedestrian collisions, so nearly one-quarter of all pedestrian collisions in the city occurred at this one intersection. I spoke with the policeman for quite some time. Fortunately, the pedestrian, though in the ambulance, was okay, but he told me that the driver said he never even saw her in the crosswalk. Unfortunately, I just had some recent experience of this. A few weeks prior to this event, I was crossing the intersection in the exact same place, and honestly, to my shock, a car just came right at me making that turn. I jumped back as fast as I could, but honestly, if I had been on the phone or texting, like I might have been, I wouldn't have stood a chance. So given that, I just wanted to come forward and emphasize that I think that the safety hazards posed by this intersection are real, and I would like to suggest we address them as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. So it looks like Katie may have put their hand down, so I will go over to John Hickson, followed by Chris Kumer.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson, councilors-
Can you please raise your microphone?
Good evening again. My name is John Hickson. I'm past president of the Menlo Park Ivo Lions Club, and I'm here with our current president, Tina Morris. We have been running the Sunday farmer's market for thirty years, and we haven't missed a Sunday in that time, which I think is pretty remarkable, except, of course, for Christmas Day. So we want to thank the city for their support, especially during the recent problems with COVID, when they were very helpful in helping us work out how we could still keep the market open. So this evening, we would like to present you with a picture board of most of the farmers over the years. Many of them on here are still coming, or if not, their families. And I also have an anniversary booklet in a tote bag, which our president is from me here, which I'd like to present to you. So thank you very much. Should I bring them over here?
Yeah, you can bring them. Okay. And this, so our next speaker is Chris Kumer, and this will be the final call for general public comment for items not on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, council members. My name is Chris Kumer of CKA Architects. I've been practicing in Menlo Park for twenty-two years. It's our job as architects to work with California Building Code, California Green Code, California Mechanical Code, California Electric Code, state laws, including ADUs, SB 9 law, BGE Green Book, local reach codes, Title 24 energy codes, local building amendments. You get the picture. Here in Menlo Park, we have another hurdle that we have to cross to try to develop functional and beautiful buildings that we can present to planning commission and oftentimes to you folks here at council. And that hurdle is a series of unwritten policies that are adopted, well, that are enforced by the planning department, by staff. So this has been happening over the many years of our practice, and I thought I would bring it to light here. A lot of these policies are not found in the code, so they're interpretations, or they're completely opposite of what the code might say. So these unpublished codes make it confusing and make it difficult to navigate approvals. We're currently dealing with three of them, a demolition calculation that's not found in the code, an ADU interpretation that's contrary to the code, and a setback regulation that's also not found in the code. This makes it difficult for applicants, frustrating for residents. It slows down the building of housing and infrastructure. So I'd like to use this forum to bring these to light, and it's been going on for many years. I'd like to suggest and advocate for a review of unwritten policies so we could codify them through your review if they're important, and if they're not, if they don't stand up to the scrutiny of code or law, we would get rid of them so we could be a city that operates in the light based on law and not unwritten policy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ateem Khan.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson, honorable council members, fellow staff members. Thank you for your time this evening to give us a chance to share our thoughts on the current situation. As Danny already mentioned, we do not expect to get rich looking, working at a local government agency. We work here because we enjoy being here and working here in the City of Menlo Park. There are many employees that commute afar, as far as Tracy, that I've heard. It is also a reason why you do not see many employees here tonight to voice out the same concerns, but I know that we all echo the same thoughts that have been shared thus far. I will not repeat what has already been stated. I hope that you understand the current situation where there is low morale and burnout amongst my colleagues. As there is more work than hours in a day to complete, I'm finding it quite hard to balance my work-life as a working mom, as I constantly think about what needs to be done at work, since I don't have that many hours during the day to finish what I have on my plate. I ask that the city council provide us with some relief and reprieve from staff shortages and think about retention efforts, along with providing us with wage and benefits that match other agencies so that we don't have to be constantly looking what our other peers are doing in the different agencies and considering whether we should move on. It's hard for me to say this to you, but I really do enjoy working here, so I do not want to be one of those people or person that keeps constantly looking at other opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker is calling in from 2231, and if you could, please state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening. Judy, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This is Matt Fruder, Associate Planner with the Menlo Park Planning Division. So good evening, Mayor Wilson, Vice Mayor Taylor, council members Holmes, Dorr, and Nash. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak and just give all of our staff an opportunity to reflect on the values that I think a lot of us share about our job, our passion for this fine community of Menlo Park, the people, the businesses, all the stakeholders, everyone who's involved in this effort to make Menlo Park the incredible place that it is. I'd like to just quickly speak on, you know, a few points that I think have already been reflected a great deal tonight. And again, I appreciate all this great feedback, my colleagues. We've all obviously been very concerned with the upcoming situation, and I apologize for being a little hasty in my speech, but I'd like to just reflect on the fact that I was rushing home, had a lot of busy errands, so I wasn't able to join in person. I would have loved to do that, but I would like to just put on the record that I'm really appreciative of the effort that you are doing, you council members are doing with our team and our unions, both the SEIU Union, which I'm a part of, and the Ask Me Union as well. And I think that it's just a really imperative time for us to think very closely and carefully about what we value. We value, obviously, community, but more importantly, we value a safe and very, you know, sustainable life and livelihood. And I think everyone here can agree on those points, and everyone can agree that the situation, the economic conditions, especially in the Bay Area, especially within San Mateo County in this area right here, is very difficult and has gotten increasingly more difficult for everyone. I commute from San Francisco. I have been living in this city since just after I started, a little over six years ago, and I know it's a little expensive, obviously, on this side of the bay generally, but very difficult for me to imagine living any closer to Menlo Park realistically, given the difficulty with cost of living and then just that exchange of, you know, first and last mile, trying to understand how close you can get from where you live to your destination of work. And I think that's something that a lot of us are dealing with, and I think, you know, obviously, wages are one big issue, but more importantly, just the sense of retention, supporting staff, and obviously strengthening the bonds that we need to strengthen to make sure that we're all, you know, supporting each other and very much proud of the work we do. And I think we all are very proud of the work we do throughout the many departments that comprise Menlo Park's city staff, and I think a lot of folks have reflected on that, and I'd just like to share that point as well. And I think that mainly sums up my comments. I'm very excited to come back and help as a planning staff member for a future project, but for now, I just wanted to represent my side as a planning staff member and expressing the concerns we have, which I think we share across the board. But thank you very much for your time, and thank you, everyone. Thank you all, my colleagues, and thank you, council members, and members of the public for your patience. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I am seeing no further hands or cards. So Mayor Wilson, you may continue.
Thank you, and thank you very much to all of our public commenters. We recognize that it can take courage to come and speak to us, and so we really appreciate hearing your perspectives and your stories. So we obviously can't comment on what we've heard in public comment, but we do listen and contemplate what you're saying. Thank you. With that, we are moving on with the agenda to G, which is advisory body vacancies and appointments. And G1 is consider applicants and make appointments to fill vacancies on the Finance and Audit Committee. To introduce this item is our city clerk, Judy Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. So this item, staff is recommending that the city council make appointments to two vacant seats on the Finance and Audit Committee. At our April 25th meeting, the city council made appointments to various other bodies and directed staff to extend the Finance and Audit Committee recruitment to fill two remaining vacancies. We received a total of five applications for the two vacancies, which are provided in the staff report and packet, and that does conclude my introduction at this time.
Thank you for that, city clerk Heron. And do we have any clarifying questions from the council, or we can move on to public comments? So city clerk Heron, can you please call for public comment?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public would like to provide comment on item G1, consider applicants and make appointments to fill vacancies on the Finance and Audit Committee. If you're participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If you're participating online, you can press that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're participating online, you can press that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling from a landline or a cell phone, you can press star nine at this time.
And our first speaker will be Lynn Bramlett.
Good evening, council. I had some prepared remarks, but I'm now going to be more impromptu based on what I heard earlier. So I was here to talk on my application and something I didn't put in the application is that it's become more and more aware to me that we are missing out significantly on grant opportunities that also can help pay for salaries. And California has a report, which I've known about where, you know, the data is there. So I'm interested in being part of that committee as a way to have a closer connection to the city. And I used to attend it for about two and a half years where I was very actively working with Ron Shepard, City Tronson, behind the scenes related to best practices. And although I'm not a financial professional by background, I'm extremely detailed oriented and reading the reports carefully and professionally able to communicate about complex information to laypeople. That was my background basically at Hewlett Packard. But I have to say, I think there should be a way to open up, a way to serve more directly. I think you all know I've been serving my community in other ways. You know, it's practically like a full-time job and there are other people who want to do this too. And given what I've heard tonight, and I would love to be on a disaster preparedness committee. You know, that would be more up my alley. But I think we need some ways that we can bring people in to help with these problems, these problems that I heard about tonight. So the other thing I want to mention, one of the speakers talked about unwritten policies and one talked about life and safety building codes where our building codes are actually lowest level. Yes, I know they're, you know, we've adopted the codes from the group that puts them out, whose name is escaping me right now, but it's considered life and safety only. You get out, but you don't get back in. I would love to see the city adopt more stringent codes that would keep our community safer. And this is something that FEMA is pushing. So I guess my main point is, and I appreciate the civility with which people were speaking, we need a way to tackle these problems more, whatever it's called, a working group, ad hoc or whatever. I'd like to see more coming together of capable residents who want to help and the staff to tackle these problems. So anyway, I didn't apply initially because I don't want anyone thinking I'm a, you know, city watchdog, but I am interested in financial transparency. And I have a strong interest in municipal best practices and especially the idea of the city getting more money via grants. But anyway, I just wanted to explain more of my application and I won't take it personally if you don't select me. I know you have a lot of qualified people, so please just know that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for a public comment on item G1. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you very much, City Clerk Karen. And thank you, Ms. Bramlett. And I want to thank all of the applicants for applying. I think for those of you who follow us along, we were unsure whether we could hit seven members for this committee and thought we might have to lower the number of members to five. And we were blessed with a plethora of qualified and capable candidates. So once again, we are grateful to live in a community where people heed the call to serve. And we just want to thank everyone in advance. So unless any of my colleagues want to say anything, I think we could just jump right to the nomination process. I'm seeing kind of nods. I see Vice Mayor Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. At this time, will we be nominating two since there's two seats to fill? Are we doing one at a time?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So I'll give it a shot of explaining what I think it is. And then City Clerk Karen, if you want to correct me, I believe we have two vacancies and they're kind of the same. And so we each have two names that we can, we don't have to give two names, but we have up to two names that we can give. And then if any of the names hit three people, then that person is appointed. Is that correct, Ms. Heron?
Yes. And I was also going to give the city council the option to do the ballot, which I think you guys have done maybe for planning commission. Or we can do it by roll call of the two names.
So is anyone wanting to do ballot or are folks comfortable with roll call? I think roll calls are default. Councilmember Combs?
I'm comfortable with roll call, but not with my name being called first.
Okay, Councilmember Dorr.
I am happy to go first if that would help.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dorr. So perhaps we'll start with Dorr and work our way down the alphabet. And then as Councilmember Combs has pointed out before, the mayor goes last. So without any further comment, we'll go ahead. City Clerk Karen, can you please do the roll call nominations for these positions?
The city clerk is giving me a nod. So the city council protocols suggest and recommend or require, depending on how you read them, that the council follows Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order requires that where a roll call vote does require that roll call be taken in alphabetical order. So if the council is opting not to do that, that would be a waiver of the council's adopted protocols.
So in light of that, I think we should just do ballot. I don't want to be conflicting with Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, just say though, we will get to this because on every vote where there's a roll call and my name is called first, I will refrain from voting first. Because I've asked the city to address this, Councilmember Mueller, who's no longer a council member, asked the city to address this. And it has not been addressed. And what I think of voting process that is more equitable. So I suggest that we resolve this now.
I just want to ask if there is maybe other additional options for roll call that other cities use and maybe at the next city council meeting, is that something that could be shared with us? Because I appreciate that there's a lot on our agenda for this evening. Thank you.
Sure. So I'll respond to Councilmember Dorr's question as to Councilmember Combs' question. I'm going to turn to the city manager on revising the protocols. Because we have a council member participating remotely via AB 2449 tonight, roll call vote must be taken. The council cannot take action but for, without using a roll call vote. That's codified in state law under AB 2449. So the city, the council needs to take vote by roll call. It's only Robert's Rules of Order that suggests that it be done alphabetically. Roll call, there's no, there's nothing in the state laws that requires roll call to be done in alphabetical order.
If, I have a follow-up question. If we waive Robert's Rules for this particular issue, are we waiving Robert's Rules for everything or can we cherry pick Robert's Rules?
Well, that's a question for you all to ask amongst yourselves. That's not a legal question. The protocols that the council has adopted say that the council uses Robert's Rules of Order. The council protocols are not codified in any city law. They're certainly not state law.
So I would propose that for this evening, I'm comfortable with on this particular issue regarding roll call that we waive the alphabetical provision. But I, I feel like this needs to be discussed and more thoughtfully visited before we make any blanket. Yeah. City Manager Murphy, did you?
Just one thing to clarify in terms of the system, we do have electronic system. It's called VoteCast. It was in place previously. It does require all five council members to be in attendance. And given some scheduling challenges that I'm aware of, it may take a few meetings for the council to get to the point where all five of you are present. So yes, if it's a matter of the next meeting, it could be a discussion topic, but some of you would be remote at that meeting. The next regular meeting in June 13th.
I see Vice Mayor Taylor, you have your hand raised?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this will be helpful based on what the city manager and the city attorney just shared. But can we do roll call by first name? I mean, alphabetical order by first name, it does put Councilmember Nash first, but.
I would actually turn to the city clerk if she knows the answer to that under Robert's Rules. I do not. Your city clerk is pulling out Robert's Rules of Order right now.
This year's edition. So all it says, it says the roll is called in alphabetical order, except that the presiding officer's name is called last and only when their vote will affect the results. It doesn't say alphabetical order by last name. So I guess it is a little flexible.
Okay. So it sounds like for tonight, Councilmember Nash is comfortable with that. So we'll go ahead with that. Thank you, Councilmember Nash.
So I would like to nominate Jayanta Day and Linda Itzakoff. Itzakoff hits.
Thank you. So next will be Councilmember Combs.
If we're going by first name, then it would be me.
Oh, so sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. So Vice Mayor, well, shouldn't the presiding officer still go last based on Robert's Rules?
But Councilmember Taylor isn't the presiding officer. The mayor is the presiding officer.
Understood. Okay. Okay. So we will go to Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. And I will nominate Lynn and Jayanta.
Thank you. Okay. So City Councilmember comes.
I'll vote for Lynn Bramlett. Susan Prohaska.
Thank you. City Councilmember Dorr?
I will vote for Lynn Bramlett and Jayanta Day.
And Mayor Willison?
Thank you. I will vote for Lynn Bramlett and Jayanta Day.
Thank you. So with four votes each by acclamation, the city council is appointing Lynn Bramlett and Jayanta Day to the two vacancies on the Finance and Audit Committee. Thank you. And congratulations.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And thank you again to all the applicants. If you hadn't heard us say it a million times, it can take multiple tries to get on a city commission. So please come back. Moving on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless the city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our consent calendar items, H1, City Council Meeting Minutes. H2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Big Break LLC. H3, adoption of a resolution approving the preliminary engineer's report for the Menlo Park Landscaping Assessment District. H4, authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement for audit services. H5, adopt a resolution to support the 2023 Southeast San Mateo County Community-Based Transportation Plan. Or H6, authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Optimi. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine participating in person. Please complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me at the clerk's desk. And our first speaker will be Julie Shanson. Julie, it looks like you might have put your hand down. Is that intentional? Please go ahead and reengage. Oh, right.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I sent a letter to you this afternoon about item H5, which is adopting a resolution to support the 2023 Southeast San Mateo County Community-Based Transportation Plan. There were some things that I think that the city should include that are not highlighted in that plan. I detailed five of them, six in my letter, but I'm just going to pull out two to talk about. One is that we put our money where our mouth is and we vote with our pocketbooks. So reading the plan, it seems like much more money is spent on safe cycling in our city than safe walking. And I would like to encourage you to spend on pedestrian improvements. If the amount allocated at $4,000 to $15,000 per intersection is really a valid pricing on what pedestrian improvements might cost. I think that we just need to think about that. And then the second thing I want to highlight is that it will be in our best interest to invest in some data collection about how fast cars are actually driving through our community. We could really use some speed feedback signs on Willow, Bayfront and Marsh so that we have a better sense of how fast cars are going, which then leads into some of our other concerns about safe routes to school and safe pedestrians crossing roads. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, H1 through H6. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Shanson, for your comment. So I want to turn it over to Vice Mayor Taylor, who earlier on this evening had flagged some of these items for questions and comments. So Vice Mayor Taylor, I'll go ahead and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. And I will be quick for item H2. I wanted to just see if there was any interest. I know that our contract going into the new year, if there's any interest in looking at other companies, I'm not sure the last time the city has actually put out an RFP for the food service. This is about the big break. Currently, we have chefables. And then my next comment is that because this has no financial impact to the city, just want to make sure that as we're coming to the budget workshop, that that is reflective in the budget. So that's my comment on H2 and I'll just keep going down the list if you'd like.
Unless perhaps we can give staff an opportunity to respond if they want to, to your comments and questions. Vice Mayor Taylor, would you like that? Or you would like to finish and then have it all at once?
Well, I'll leave that up to the city manager. I sent some questions already that were resolved. These were just last minute.
Okay. So City Manager Murphy, would you like to respond to any of what Vice Mayor Taylor has said?
Yes, of the regarding the chefables contract, my understanding, I think this was reflected in the staff report last time we went out. It was four years ago and we plan to do that next year. This is an annual routine that has to happen. So we don't have the benefit of kind of multi-year approval of things, but it's not atypical for the city to approve things for up to five years. This is a program that is subject to pretty stringent nutrition requirements to comply with this. So, so I think, happy to follow up with the Vice Mayor more about that and then her second point. So I think happy to follow up with the Vice Mayor more about that, and then her second point about how the financial impact or lack thereof is reflected as part of the budget preparation. We can definitely look to highlight that.
Thank you.
Okay, so then please proceed, Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. H2 is the resolution for the Menlo Parks Landscaping Assessment District. I am asking that we bring this back for a public discussion. I've had a few residents reach out to me regarding this, and I think it'll be helpful to understand where their tax dollars are going, since this is street sweeping services, trees, and sidewalks. And that's my only comment on that item.
So are you comfortable with this being voting on that with the full consent calendar? Or are you wanting to not vote on that?
Yes, I'm comfortable voting on it, but just to give the public a better understanding of where the tax, where this tax, what it pays for, I just think at some point it comes back and it could be just a part of a discussion at the council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And on item H4, this is on page H4.13, and the language reads shall, and I'm asking that it says must. So it says the auditor shall review and verify all trial balance sheets and summary schedules. I'm asking that it says the auditor must review, because shall seems optional to me.
So asking city staff their thoughts on that. At it, shall and must mean the same thing in this contract? Or the same thing, shall is not optional?
Okay, thank you. And my last comment is on H5. And I had a couple of comments on this one. Just give me one moment to pull up my notes. One has to do with the pedestrian bridge that that we have in Menlo Park. Lighting is an issue. There are a couple of things that didn't come up in this, which surprised me. The pedestrian bridge does not have enough lighting. So I'm asking that to be included, both interior and the exterior lighting there, and also looking at the safety on the entrances on both sides. And Mayor Williston, if you're okay, I'll just keep going.
Yeah, I think it'd be great if you went and shared your comments, and then we can have city staff respond to what would be appropriate from the council.
Thank you. And my next question is just around the walk audit. Did it look at how many pedestrians, bicyclists, and other motor transportations use the pedestrian bridge? The next actually was just brought up in public comment about adding all of the intersections along Bayfront that have a pedestrian crossing, has a crosswalk, should be included, not just specifics. And then I've brought this up in the past, just about the timing of the light, the signalization of the light on Chilco and Bayfront needs to be monitored, looked at. There's a safety issue. There's less than five seconds to get out to make a left turn from Chilco onto Bayfront, and this has been going on for a while. So that needs to be looked at for safety. And then also the speed feedback signs. To my knowledge, the Highway Patrol does not enforce the speed limit on Bayfront. And I'll speak specifically about District 1, especially the Belle Haven neighborhood. We are surrounded by speed. And so we need to see more safety measures, safety enhancements in this area, and those are my comments. And you can look at the email that Ms. Shanson sent in for a little bit more specifics, because I am concerned about there being a higher investment in bike infrastructure than there is in the safety of pedestrians. And to me, it's reflective in the recommendations for the micro mobility projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So I don't know, Mr. Louch, I believe there were five, at least five issues that Vice Mayor Taylor brought up. I don't know if you have them itemized, but if you'd like to address them, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Williston and members of council, and for your questions, Vice Mayor Taylor. So Hugh Louch, Assistant Public Works Director in charge of transportation. And we do have online, I think maybe this is a question for you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So there's questions, sort of what is staff doing about certain things, and there's questions about what this study did, and the study was led by CCAG. And we have staff from CCAG and Placeworks who led the study available. If you have some questions, and we can bring them on. So I want to maybe first ask if you're looking for them to maybe respond to some of that, and I can also speak to some of the specific issues potentially.
Just in the interest of time, Mr. Louch, it would be helpful if you would speak on it. And maybe your responses would provide the information I'm looking for.
Yeah, no, happy to do that. I will say, one, thank you, and thank you to Ms. Shanson for flagging some of these issues. And I think, you know, as I say, the staff from CCAG who worked on this are online, and they can certainly take that input and try to update their study. And then to the extent that that study really identifies a lot of projects, many of which are already, you know, on the radar of the city and things that we're either working on or have, you know, in the future to work on. You know, we appreciate always, of course, hearing about some of these specifics. And so things like, you know, I would say there are several of these items that are specific to Caltrans-related infrastructure, so the pedestrian bridge, the signal at Chilco and Bayfront, the speed limits on Bayfront, and those kinds of issues. There are things that we, you know, can absolutely look into and identify, so we'll check out and see the lighting issue on the bridge. And if there's an issue there, we'll need to coordinate with Caltrans, but that's something that we can do. We are well aware of the issues at Chilco and Bayfront and have routinely are filing sort of tickets with Caltrans to try to get those issues addressed for all users, because I think, you know, both for vehicles and for people crossing on bike or on foot, those signal timings are not long enough. And that is something that we have flagged for them and will continue to flag for them, and appreciate you bringing that up as part of that. And then sort of the general need to think about sort of speed and the crossings of Bayfront being challenging is something that certainly agree with you. It is a major concern, although it is obviously a state highway, and so our ability as staff to directly control those things is a little bit limited, but we'll certainly do the best that we can. And then let's see, thinking about some of these other issues you raised also on the crossing. So what we do potentially control are the entrances on both sides. We did on one side add stop signs. There was already sort of an always stop on the Pierce roadside. We did add recently an always stop on the Vampirian side. So we believe that has started to make some improvements there. Last year, we did apply for a grant to try to make further safety improvements, and that's certainly a project that's on our radar that we're going to want to continue to pursue as we go forward. And then I think the last comments were just not enough focus on the safety of pedestrians, and this plan, I'll pass that along to the CCAG staff to look at. And certainly, safety of pedestrians is about most important to staff and something that we will continue to look at as we look at projects or issues, you know, anywhere that we're thinking about safety.
Thank you, Mr. Louch. I appreciate the information that you provided. And just for clarity, from my understanding, when I travel on Bayfront, there's about, I believe, 25 seconds for folks to cross Bayfront, at least along Chilco. I haven't looked at the timing at the other intersection. My concern has been with the amount of time that a car traveling northbound on Bayfront has making that left turn to get out onto Bayfront. There's not enough time for them to pick up speed before cars coming anywhere from 65 to 80 miles an hour coming also northbound. So that has been a concern of mine that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that clarification, Vice Mayor Taylor. We certainly will follow up with Caltrans about that specifically.
Thank you. And Mayor Williston, those were only all my questions. Thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So just following up, Vice Mayor Taylor, was there any action that you wanted the City Council to take? Or do you feel satisfied with the feedback you've received from staff?
Thank you, Mayor Williston. I am satisfied with the feedback from staff. I do, considering it is a taxpayer question, well, not even question, a comment that I made earlier just about the assessment district.
So I will ask City Manager Murphy, this might be kind of going back to our continuous conversation about how do we get something on an agenda? So with that feedback, City Manager Murphy, how are you taking that request?
Let's see, Mayor, I guess it would be a matter of this item will indeed come back to the City Council at one of the June meetings. And so if it's a matter of whether it's the, like, a presentation on the material that's enclosed in the report, so the council can have a discussion, or is it on that particular evening, it will be when the council's looking to adopt the budget. So I guess it would depend on whether it's trying to have that discussion for that action in June or subsequent to that.
You're the mayor, yeah, respond. Thank you. There, I'm not asking for it to come with the budget item. It can come afterwards if there's a way to include some of that information in the budget workshop. If not, just for it to come back when time permits. And this is just to help, help the public just understand, for those who don't, just about what the tax district pays for, since it's more than one thing.
Great.
I hope that was helpful.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So with that, are there any other comments, questions about the consent calendar, or would anyone like to make a motion? Councilmember Dower?
I make a motion to approve everything on the consent calendar. Thank you. And Councilmember Nash?
I second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Dower, and a second by City Councilmember Nash to approve the consent calendar. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower?
Yes.
Mayor Williston?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and we are now moving on to I, which is the section of our public hearings. Public hearings are formal proceedings held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. We have three public hearings this evening. I also want to note that public hearings by nature are a very prescribed process, and we will be following very tightly written scripts on who speaks and when, and when we close, public comment and whatnot. So I just wanted to give the public a heads up about that. So our first public hearing is I1. Consider a City Council call-up of the Planning Commission denial of a use permit to allow electric pool heating equipment to exceed the nighttime noise limit at 100 Terminal Avenue. And to introduce this item is our associate planner, Chris Turner. Please, Mr. Turner.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor Williston and councilmembers. Again, tonight, we're talking about the call-up of the Planning Commission denial of the use permit to exceed the nighttime noise limit at the MPCC pools at 100 Terminal Avenue. For this, there we go. For tonight's schedule, I will do a very brief introduction and project background, then we'll have a presentation by the applicant, our Public Works Department, and then a presentation comments from Vice Mayor Taylor. So very quickly, the MPCC and associated replacement of the pool facilities was approved in 2021 with the direction to, for the buildings to be all electric, and this included the pool facilities. We received, we issued the building permit for the construction of the MPCC in winter of 2021, and then construction began shortly after. The use permit application to exceed the nighttime noise limit was submitted in March of 2022. And just to clarify, the use permit would only have allowed the nighttime noise limit to be exceeded as the equipment was projected to not exceed the daytime noise limitations. So the pool heating equipment could operate during the day without a use permit. Planning Commission held a series of public hearings on the item beginning in October of last year, and then again in February, March, and April of this year. Throughout the Planning Commission discussions, we consistently got feedback and heard concerns from both commissioners and the public around the exceeding of the noise, noise, the nighttime noise limits. And ultimately, the Planning Commission denied the use permit at the April 24th meeting and made findings that allowing the noise to be exceeded in the nighttime would be detrimental to the health and welfare of surrounding residents. So the decision to deny the use permit was called up to the Planning Commission under Section 1686025. So at this meeting, the council would be able to affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the Planning Commission. We did receive a couple additional items of correspondence after publication of the staff report. Very generally, they expressed concerns, continued concerns about exceeding the nighttime noise limits, and then just the noise in general. There was reference to the Climate Action Plan and then the EQC Work Plan and how that fits into the pool equipment. And then additional suggestions to redesign and relocate the heating equipment. So that said, the recommendation tonight would be to adopt a resolution to uphold the Planning Commission's denial of the use permit. And then later, which Public Works Department will get into, be to direct staff to install the heat pumps as currently designed, conduct live measurements of the sound during the commissioning and testing period prior to pool opening. And then if the noise levels exceed the nighttime noise ordinance, staff would return to the City Council for authorization to install mitigation measures. And then one final cleanup item. Just an update to the resolution, the second page, the third whereas statement, we're missing a couple of words there. So it should say, whereas the Planning Commission desires the project to be modified to include noise-reducing measures such as relocation of equipment, noise-dampening enclosures, or alternate equipment in order to reduce noise emanating from pool heating equipment to below 50 decibels. And with that, I'll turn it over to Senior Civil Engineer Teresa Ebedian, who is accompanied by our various consultants and representatives from Meta.
Good evening, Mayor Williston and City Councilmembers. I'm Teresa Ebedian, Senior Civil Engineer in the Public Works Department. I wanted to introduce the rest of our team tonight. So in the council chambers, we have Sean Reiner, Library and Community Services Director, and we have Sherelle Jarrett with Meta. And then online, we have several consultants as well. We have our Acoustical Consultants, Ethan Salter and Skylar Carrico. We have our Pool Consultant, who's Ben Lee with Pace. And then we have our Energy Consultant, Byron Pactor with Optini. So we do have quite a robust team to help answer questions at the end of the presentation. So first, I'm going to review the site plan, and then I'm going to highlight the work that has been done since the use permit denial. So we've definitely heard the comments. So we've definitely heard the comments from the Planning Commission and the public, and we've worked hard to come up with a solution to move forward that keeps the pool heating in compliance with the noise ordinance at all times. So we'll start with this overview of the MPCC site. So there's Terminal Avenue over on the right side as you enter the site and leading into the parking lot. Continuing to the left, the building is in the gray hatched area with the bold outline. To the right of that, with the diagonal hatching is the pool area. You can see the faint outlines of the two pools. And then below the pool area is the pool equipment building, which houses the solar source heat pumps. And then moving over to the left on the south of the building are the five air source heat pumps. Continuing left is the outside space that's programmed for a children's play area and other activities. And then even further to the left of the page is the Kelly Park and the track and field area. So again, there are two heating systems for the pools. There's the solar thermal heating system that uses collectors that are attached to the photovoltaic panels. And water circulates through those collectors and is warmed by the sun, and then it's pumped into the pool. And then, of course, we have the air source heat pumps, which are powered by electricity. They operate by extracting heat from the outside, compressing the air, and then delivering the heated water to the pools. We conducted a preliminary noise study. The diagram shows the noise levels in decibels when all five air source heat pumps are running. So the first ring on the closest to the building is the 60 decibel sound level. And the outer ring is the 50 decibel sound level. So if we had wanted to run the air source heat pumps at night, we would be exceeding that 50 decibel limit here. But if we were not running them at night, you can see that the 60 decibel limit doesn't reach the residences. So we're in compliance in the daytime daytime. So since the Planning Commission denial of the use permit, we have further refined our pool modeling. And we've also further evaluated some potential mitigation measures. Those include a sound wall located at the residential property line, the relocation of the air source heat pumps to Kelly Park and the sand pit area, and also upsizing of the solar thermal system. Our initial full modeling was shared with the Planning Commission on February 27. It was performed by the Swimming Pool Designer Pace. The operational strategy at that time was to provide the maximum flexibility in the time that we could use the air source heat pumps. So we wanted the ability to run the heat pumps at night if needed. So we the model was based on conservative assumptions. It used a single set point for the heating. It used monthly average temperatures instead of daily or hourly temperatures. And it didn't take into account the solar thermal heating system or the pool cover. So it provided the maximum estimated runtimes for the heat pumps over a 24 hour period. It didn't say whether the heat pumps had to be on at night or during the day. So again, we wanted the use permit to have that flexibility to use them anytime of day or night. So since then, we have refined our modeling, and our assumption is now that we cannot use the heat pumps at night. So the refined model simulates the pool temperatures on an hourly basis. It now includes the solar thermal heating, and it includes the pool covers as well. And the model has concluded that in a normal weather year, the combined air source heat pumps plus the solar thermal system can provide overnight heating without needing to run the heat pumps at night. And that's achieved by overheating the pools between the pool close and the quiet hours on the coldest months of the year. So the air source heat pumps are, again, they're switched off at nighttime. And we found that the pools may not reach those desired temperatures on very infrequent extremely cold weather events. And that's happened, for example, five times in the last 50 years. So very, very infrequently. The next slide, this is going to be a little bit technical, but I wanted to show the modeling output. So this is a model of the instructional pool. And it considers the three coldest days during the year. So the instructional pool is the more sensitive of the two pools to heat loss and temperature fluctuation because it's shallower and it has more surface area to volume. And then, so what you see is the the dark blue graph in the background is the pool temperatures. The temperatures are on the axis on the the vertical access axis, and then on the horizontal axis, it is the time. So this is again, three consecutive 24 hour periods. The skinny orange line, you see three of them, those are those represent midnight. And then if we back up to the beginning of that graph, you'll see solid red bars, and they show the heat soak time or that time when we overheat the pools by turning on the pumps. And this happens after the pools are closed, but before the nighttime quiet hours begin. So we're overheating the pools. And then after that red bar, you can see the highest peak temperature. So the temperature is then at its highest. And then you see it slowly decreasing throughout the night as it's losing heat, but not as rapidly because it has a cover on it. And then it dips down more a little more drastically when the cover comes off in the morning. So this is early morning swim time. The pool temperatures drop, and then they start to climb back up again as the pumps are turned back on. So I hope that's clear. The bottom two graphs just really are the meant to show that the heat pumps are turned off when when it's all the way down at the bottom, you see zero output. That's just showing that the heat pumps are are turned off. So now I'll talk about a few of the mitigation measures that we looked into further. So we considered a sound wall at the residential property line. And we looked at a seven foot high wooden fence with a inner layer of mass loaded vinyl, and we found that that would provide a significant measure of noise mitigation. The approximate cost for this fence would be about $200,000. And a use permit will be required if it's over seven feet high. You can the location of the fences in green on the little image. We did a preliminary noise study. Next slide, thanks. And it shows that at a seven foot high seven foot high wall, the decibels would be 49 at the nearest first story residences. The next slide shows some images of what that mass loaded vinyl fence would look like. So the mass loaded vinyl is actually like sandwiched in between two wooden fences, basically. That the picture on the left shows a retaining wall on the bottom that we wouldn't need for our project. It's just to give an idea of what it looks like. Okay, so we also further looked at relocation of the heat pumps to the sand pit area. There was a lot of interest in in moving the heat pumps around on the site. We found that the heat pumps could physically fit over on the left side of the plan closer to the Kelly Kelly Field Track in the sand pit area. We would have to split them into three and then two. And then we actually can fit a wall around them. There's a required six inch or sorry, six foot of clearance around the heat pumps from any solid wall for airflow. But unfortunately, the the there's a pinch point between the wall and the track. The text is really small, but it's four feet. And that's a that is less than the recommended distance between a running track and an obstacle. So we think that's not you know, a valid path forward. So we're not recommending that that mitigation measure. We also looked at upsizing the solar thermal heating system. And so if we if we upsize that system, we would reduce the need for the air source heat pumps. The rough order of magnitude for that cost is $250,000 plus an electric, a possible electrical panel upgrade. There would be schedule impacts at this point. The collectors have already been ordered and are onsite to order new ones. The the lead time is extremely long. The we'd need to get a permit revision, and this could affect the pool opening date by up to six months. Oops. So this this could also be retrofitted later. It doesn't have to happen now. It could be added if it were needed or desired. So we're not recommending it at this time. And then just wanted to touch on the schedule regarding the pools. So the lap pool and piping have already been constructed. The instructional pool is under construction currently. The heat pumps were scheduled to be installed on June 23. And the concrete work was supposed to start on May 15. As of May 10, we told the contractor to stop working on all aspects related to the heat pumps until we provide further direction. So again, the just to revisit the recommendation, the recommendation is to uphold the resolution. I'm sorry, adopt a resolution to uphold the Planning Commission's denial of the use permit, which would allow the heat pumps to exceed the nighttime noise ordinance. Direct staff to install the heat pumps as currently designed. And then conduct live measurements of sound during the commissioning and testing period prior to the pool opening. And if the noise levels are found to exceed the noise ordinance, this then staff will return to City Council for authorization to install mitigation measures. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ebedian.
Yep.
Ebedian. So at this time, I would like to introduce Vice Mayor Taylor to to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and thank you to the staff for their presentation. I also wanted to acknowledge the I believe there are two, one from Miss from a Cybahan Flynn, the post on CCIN, and there was one other by Donald Mendoza. Just wanted to acknowledge your your public comments. I was reading them just now. I also just wanted to share with the council and and thank the City Manager and the City Attorney for giving me the time to do a call up. I know it adds to our agenda, but to me, this was very important. There were a lot of dynamics happening at the Planning Commission meeting, which is why I I called it up, one of the reasons why. I called this project up because there are a lot of existing conditions here that now for me have been highlighted. One is there's there's not just the consideration of the noise element from the heat pump, but also the existing noise, whether it is air traffic. It is the noise from the freeway from the from 101, the PG&E substation, and then also neighborhood traffic. And so thinking about all of those, and there has there's yet to be a noise study done on all of those elements on how they impact the community that not just live on Terminal and Del Norte, but also the connecting streets. Is that this gives an opportunity to actually discuss it. So this wasn't something that the Planning Commission can do. This is the City Council, I believe. And so that's the reason why I had this called up. I believe that we can not only continue the project on the pool, but also address the concerns of the residents. I believe that we can do both in discussion. So I'm hoping that's what will happen here today. I'm not sure who will speak after me if this is a follow up is public comment, or if the follow up is from staff. But what I also wanted to to just really dig into is the the object, the the goal, the objective is to absorb the noise, is figuring out ways to absorb the noise. And then also look at what is a reasonable decimal for quality of life for folks. And let's see. I think for now, Mayor Wilson, I will either guess pass it to you for public comment or back to staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So as I mentioned, public hearings have a prescribed format. So at this point, if there are any clarifying questions from City Council before we open the public hearing. I'm not seeing any, then I would like to open the public hearing. And City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our public hearing item I one. Consider a City Council call up of the Planning Commission denial of a use permit to allow electric pool heating equipment to exceed the nighttime noise limit at 100 Terminal Avenue. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the front desk. Okay, and our first speaker will be Arlene Navarro, followed by Maya Perkins.
Hi, my name is Arlene Navarro. I'm from the Bellhaven neighborhood. And my family and I are here today to listen on hear about the updates regarding the that's being installed at the Community Center in Bellhaven. And so I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. So next is Maya Perkins, and then we have a hand raised from the Bellhaven Library.
Hi, thank you so much, City Council and staff for all the work that you've done on this. My concern is the noise in the nighttime. I'm also concerned about the wall. I have questions about what that would actually look like in the backyard and how it would make me feel if it may be like a costophobic thing to have a wall right up on the property line. And I'm wondering if there's another place on the Community Center property line that that wall could go. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I'm going to turn to our Bellhaven Library public speakers, and if you could, please state your name before your comment.
Hi, my name is Donald Mendoza. And I too want to say I appreciate all the work that's been done here. And I'm a little torn as to as to what to say now, actually, because it's a very interesting meeting. We've heard from city employees who are overworked, underpaid. And then we've heard from a professional architect who talked about the undisciplined approach to to city ordinance. Well, I'm going to give you a different perspective here of just a member of the community. And I can tell you, though, that we we in the Bellhaven community are united against this this project. And furthermore, up until now, we we've taken issue with how the project has marginalized and dismissed our community as we have brought our concerns over the last few months to the Planning Commission. The project has treated the Bellhaven community as it's kind of an aptitude. And this is what I want to get to. Now, I did send in comments previously, but but what what this illustrates to me is a is a there's something in the city that isn't quite working. Okay. Because for a project to get to this point, okay, it went through to concept, it went through design, it went to reviews, and it went to procurement, and now it's actually an implementation. And all the way along that process, okay, nobody stopped to think about whether they were conforming with city city ordinance. So something is definitely broken, and it's going to cost the city and all the citizens in the long term when you when you have to either do massive amounts of rework, or you have litigation. So something should be looked at, and there are some there are some corrective actions that need to take place. But with with regard to that, I I had intended initially to 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 say a lot more about about the project in particular, not addressing our needs. But from what I've heard today, it sounds like it sounds like they have they have they have done some bit of diligence. But again, it's so late in the lifecycle of this project. That again, I I I feel for them because again, as as we've heard, they're understaffed and they're underpaid. But at the same time, though, I think that the city needs to needs to 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 do right by its citizens, and we come to a place where we're torn between two you know, two purposes. One is to remain, you know, green and 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 forbid your gas of gas systems. And the other one is to protect the well being of its citizens. So unfortunately, now the City Council is in a very, very difficult So unfortunately, now the city council is in a very, very difficult situation. But I can tell you, the Bellhaven community stands on on our well being, and we are asking that whatever happens, that the noise levels are not allowed to exceed the limits that have been established for human health. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any additional speakers calling in from our Bellhaven Library location?
Just one more, Judy.
Perfect.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm actually Siobhan Flynn. I know it's spelled wrong, weird, but it's pronounced Siobhan. I submitted comments as well. And I just want to say again that I am still deeply concerned with the solution of moving forward with the swimming pool pumps as designed. I haven't really even learned that much new information. I read through the notes already that were online and from your presentation. It sounded like perhaps you would leave the pumps off at night, but I'm not sure if that's what you were saying. On top of that, I mean, you've given suggestions of what can be done, but they don't seem to be like suggestions that will work right out of the box. Again, as Dawn said, I feel like it should have been addressed before. Somebody also asked me, well, what would be my suggestion? My suggestion would be, how do I prove, how do I choose which ordinance to violate or to not violate? If I had a suggestion, I would like gas over my decibels being seated by fifty decimals. Also, I would like to point out, the city commission did note that we should be allowed to have something less than fifty decimals. I mean, much less than fifty decimals. That's at the highest. So why should we have to have something at fifty decimals, or if mitigating factors have to happen, forty nine decimals? I don't think that that would be helpful or very good for our community and for our well being. Finally, I just have to say, thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor, for talking about the other noises. I didn't want to bring it into the picture because I know we're trying to focus on the pumps. But I don't know, if you don't live here, you you don't know that this that that center, we have events all the time. They go late into the night. So we also have whistleblowing, we have bands playing, we have teams doing whatever they're doing. So how is that going to add to the decimal levels of the pumps? Somebody, I guess, sorry, I would just like to point out that, again, I don't feel that we have been taken seriously in our suggestions or in our pleas to be heard as people who deserve a better and safer community and a healthier community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I believe there is an additional comment from our Bellhaven Satellite Station.
That's correct, Judy.
Great.
Thank you, Pam Jones, resident of the Bellhaven neighborhood. And again, I'd like to thank you for having the satellite. It helps considerably when it comes to participation, not only in council meetings, but also in commission and committee meetings. I have a couple of things. I have been following this and participating since October. So I do have some familiarity, but one of the first things is that I would request that all residents in the neighborhood that's going to be affected receive the notices and not just the immediate in a circle that's been been prescribed by something with the city. So in other words, all of our residents in Bellhaven should have known about this issue. And it is correct. When we found out, we strongly support the neighborhood that will be, the portion of the neighborhood that would be impacted. So that's the first thing. The second thing is there's all of these mitigations that are brought up now. And it really kind of changes the way I think about it, because I too am one of those people, if there's going to be all that noise put in the traditional heating system. And I'm more concerned about the mental well being of people than I am about the air quality, because the air quality is already really bad, and there's also mitigation for that. So my suggestion would be at this point is to not allow, not to run the pumps that that exceed the decimals with the trial and error, but to start to begin adding the solar panels, because if you start adding them now, they will be completed by the time the cold weather comes in, and they would supplement any additional heating that the pool would need. And yeah, I'm glad that was that was, you know, shown that we could constantly do that. As far as a wall goes, it's really about what the people whose homes are backed up against that wall. And and I am looking forward to the council and the city making healthy decisions for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So at this time, this will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing item I one. Seeing no further hands or cards. Oh, please. Did I miss a card?
Yeah.
I apologize. Please come right up and state your name for the record.
All right. Yeah, thank you. Oops. Hi, my name is Peter. I'm a resident here in Bellhaven. Thank you for the commissioner, the mayor. And special thanks to Cecilia Taylor for Vice Mayor for bringing this up. I had a few things to talk about this. I think the underlying thing is you'll hear and you've heard is the noise level is is unacceptable, right? So I think that's that's the bottom line. What we, what at least I'm unsure of is exactly what the mitigating or the recommendation is. I heard a few things of moving the pumps next to the or behind the the field and putting a wall around it. And then there was a second one about having a a wall closer to the homes, I believe. And and I couldn't quite tell where where that was on the picture. And like many of the the people have talked about, this this has been a rushed process and more like an afterthought. I remember I've been in a number of these meetings, and I remember the first time one of the suggestions was to close the windows. You know, that that is, I still remember that. And it said a lot without saying much, right? I mean, it it there's a lot of skepticism. We want this thing to work. You know, and now I thank them for coming back again and, you know, coming back with some recommendations. For me, it's still unclear which one they choose or which one they believe will work. The other thing is, if it doesn't work, right? Meaning like if the noise level with all the mitigation still exceeds, what actually happens after that? Do we turn things off or not? Yeah, there's there's a lot of questions still, and it's still open. I I'm not quite sure where this is landing. But there's a strange sense of feeling here that it's not quite correct. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And again, apologies for missing the card. It looks like it was marked for I two. So I'm glad we got to hear from you at the appropriate time. And so now seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you to the members of the public for sharing their lived experiences and the perspectives of of what it's like being in the neighborhood and your concerns about the noise. With that, I will now close the public hearing and open this item up for city council discussion. And I'd actually like to ask people clarifying questions to start. Actually, Vice Mayor Taylor, did you have something?
Mayor Wilson, I'll I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. I first wanted to follow up on some of the public questions regarding the wall. And if you could help walk us through the proposed location of that wall and what that would feel like for neighbors.
Thank you. We're just trying to pull up the slide. So one potential location for a sound wall would be on the residential property line, so that's a shared property line with PG&E and and the residences. We would, you know, like to conduct a noise study with the actual noise, live measurements. Once the pool is installed and the equipment is running to determine what the sound levels are at each residence. But, you know, potentially, we could install a sound wall in this location if the noise levels were higher than fifty or if even if they weren't higher than fifty. Again, our model currently shows that we will not be exceeding that fifty decimal sound, except in very extreme, you know, weather events. So we don't anticipate that. The wall is more of a mitigation measure if we want to add that as well.
Thank you. And do you foresee this wall replacing residents' current wall?
Yes. Yeah, there are, yeah, there are many walls along that line, and many of them are in need of repair. So we do anticipate that this would replace all of those walls.
Is seven feet high a typical backyard fence, right?
In residential zoning districts, which this zoning would be R two that borders the the PG&E substation, seven feet is fairly typical and the maximum height.
Okay, I think Councilmember Door had a follow up question about the fence.
Yes, do some folks not have a fence? I'm thinking about the impacts to lighting.
We believe they all have a fence.
Okay, and I'm also curious about the wall placement. If it wasn't placed here, have you looked at other models for where it could be placed in this in between area in the PG&E substation? Or what are other options there?
Yeah, there are other options. I might ask our noise consultant to take that question. But there there is another location, you know, as you mentioned, between the sub, between the heat pumps and the residences that would not follow that property line that could also be effective and and perhaps even more effective in in reducing the noise. If Ethan is available or Salter to take that further explain.
Hello, my name is Ethan Salter, acoustical consultant on the project. And the answer to that question is yes. As I just explained, the barrier could potentially extend along a diagonal line as is currently shown a little bit to the left of the green line towardly on the screen, to kind of wrap around the south property line of the project. So the reason why this barrier is affected is geometry. So it's tall, you know, it's seven feet tall. But if that location is moved from the green line to another location along the planned south property line, and then wrapping around that small outbuilding there, and then extending up to the yellow circle area on the screen. The geometry is about the same as if the barrier was along the green line also. So noise moves in straight lines from the air source heat pump location to the property lines in question. And so this alternative location would be in the same line as what is currently shown on the green green zone highlighted there.
And if that were the case, would, do you envision the there being two fences for each? The property owner would maintain their current fence, and then there'd be an additional wall?
Yes, the current fences would remain as is. We would not assume they'd be doing anything special acoustically. And the new fence would be constructed in this potential alternative location in the manner that was shown in the pictures or any other manner that has similar surface weight and mass and height and extent.
And so approximately how many feet from that? Because I'm envisioning like a a dead zone between the two fences. Is that accurate?
I guess the dead zone would be the PG&E substation property.
I guess I'm I'm still a little confused where, because I'm thinking there's the existing fence line and then another new fence line that that would go in, but maybe I'm getting too in the weeds here. I I can move on. That's enough about the fences. I had a question about this additional solar panels. It didn't look like there was any analysis on, it said it would improve, but it the heat would improve, but there's no quantification or on what that efficacy would be. Do you have any information on that?
I'd call on another team member to answer that one, Byron with Optini.
Hello, this is Byron from Optini. Yeah, I think that there's a point that maybe could be made more clear as well. And that is that the solar source heat pumps are providing most of the heating you need throughout the year. As staff presented in an earlier chart, you don't have to flip to that now, but you could see we were really looking just at the shoulder winter months, so, you know, November to February. Most of the year, the solar source heat pumps appear to be doing most of the heating. And then you know, the the challenge is really looking at, again, as staff pointed out, extreme weather events. We seem to be fine with just the solar source heat pumps, which again are quiet, not a noise issue. You know, unless you have really cold nighttime temperatures, at which time we still think you could run preheating the pool and then using the solar source overnight. They also run at night, not as well as when the sun is full on them. So the question is, do you want to spend the quarter million dollars here to upgrade all of this and still not really solve the problem? You know, in that very extreme weather event, the it's, we're really just looking at, you know, a few days of the year when it's cold enough to be running the air source heat pumps full time. And this solution, you know, again, may not get us even with the full solar build out, may not get us away, and the modeling shows does not get us away from needing the air source heat pumps sometimes. But it does show that most of the time, and you know, I'm really glad that council and the, you know, design team, which is very large for this building, brought the solar source heat pumps in, because it does show that most of the year, we are quietly heating the pool with the solar energy. And it's only during, you know, extreme cold days that the air source heat pumps do have to come on. So I I feel like that maybe is important information for concerned community members to be aware of as well. But again, the the real objective here is to make sure everyone can use the pool year round, get the most benefit out of that. And so that's why we're not recommending making this complete investment in solar, because we know it doesn't eliminate the solar source heat pumps completely. So, you know, I hope that's most of the answer.
Thank you. Just, I guess, one additional question. I know my colleagues probably have questions and comments. We have a environmental quality commissioner that wrote in with some suggestions about putting more insulation on top or stacking additional heat pumps. Have you looked into those? What are the, or maybe not stacking heat pumps, stacking something? I'm not technical on this. Have you looked into those suggestions?
That might be a question for the air source heat pump design team. We were just the solar thermal evaluation team.
Yeah, I can take that. So we did look at those questions and suggestions, and I believe those were the ones that we addressed in the planning commission staff report. So the, if you like, I can go over them now. From what I recall, there was a suggestion to use smaller heat pumps that were quieter, in which case we would need to have like twenty five or twenty eight heat pumps. And that would cause a number of difficulties with regards to citing them. We couldn't put them, I mean, they they wouldn't really fit on the site. You, I don't think you could stack them. And so we weren't able to use the smaller heat pumps. And there was also the suggestion to put like an acoustical silence. And there was also the suggestion to put like an acoustical silencer on just the top. And so I believe our response was that we can't, we can't distinguish how much noise is coming from each side of the pump. You can't say like, well, 20 decibels are coming from the top and 10 are coming from the sides, like the whole unit is producing a certain sound or a certain level of noise. And so you, we don't know what the, what the benefit would be from having just on top. And also, there's, there's furthermore a space restriction as well.
Thank you. I'll let my colleagues ask some questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Door.
Yes, so I was a bit concerned to know that in the original work that was done with the consultants, they didn't include the potential of having a pool cover. And as we've seen, that that is hugely important for reducing heating needs. And so just as a flag that that concerns me, and I think that that kind of due diligence and ensuring that all that information is reflected is really important for our consultants when they work with our city to put it in real-life conditions, not just in a simulated model on a computer. And so with that, I'm curious about the cover that the city staff are proposing. We do use, are there different levels that were considered? Because I imagine, depending on how thick or what kind of materials you're using, that can add extra heat insulation.
Okay. So I would turn to our pool consultant to see what cover they recommended and what they used in their model. Ben, are you available?
Hi, this is Ben from PACE. We, standard industry pool cover is panel pool cover is, is about 10 feet a panel, and multiple panel will be installed on top of the pool surface to basically seal the pool from evaporation, as well as radiation heat to the temperature. So we, for, for at night, when you cover it, standard manufacturer-wise is, we will save about 70 to 80% of the heat throughout the night. And come back to the, the question, the, the question before, why would it not consider, you know, everything into the, the equation or the model that we did before, due to conservative and, and moving parameter of the pool? Because heating the pool is not exactly one plus one equal to, you have a lot of variables, like, like air temperature, wind, the pool cover, be able to put in correctly, you know, put in correct time, or so many variables that we can, we cannot guarantee. So the approach from PACE team is we provide the worst-case scenario. So I hope you understand that kind of approach. Yeah.
Thank you. And a curiosity I have is, if that option is this industry standard grade, but the curiosity I have is, if we invested another $100,000 as opposed to $200,000 or a lot more money to do a different mitigation measure into a really, really beyond standard or industry standard, could we get even more of that energy saved? And has that been looked at at all?
Yes, those options also looking at on our team. However, when you, when you implement something that's not industry standard, therefore, you need to train your staff, therefore, more cost need to incur, as well as maintenance issue. Yeah, we can do some custom, like, you know, safety cover, like, you know, like those residential pool that have a safety covers to revenge kid to, to jump into the pool without any, without anyone notice. When you drain the pool in, in those state that you need to winterize, you want, you want to put a safety cover on. You know, those, that's what we're looking at. But this is the big pool, and industry standard is, is common practice, and we think it saves enough energy. I think Optini present their model, which is we save enough energy to not run the S or heat pump at night.
Thank you. And I appreciate the, the need as a consultant to show the worst-case scenario, to make sure you're not over-promising and then under-delivering. And it was helpful to see in the, the staff report, the model with the three coldest potential days. But I'm also curious to see, do we have models that show a typical winter? What, what are we talking about? Because if we're talking about one or two days where with just the pool cover, we'll wake up, oh no, it's below 76 degrees, we can't, we can't use the pool this morning, that seems like such a low risk and such, you know, that doesn't seem to matter as much. So I'm just curious if you can show us what a typical winter is looking like, because that seems to be the crux of where we're needing to focus.
I'm, I'm sure that we do have those models. I haven't seen them yet. I'm not sure that we want to pull them up right now in the interest of time. We, if you want me to look into that. But I think that what we're showing in the model that I had in the presentation is the, the stress test of the worst case. So again, like the five and 50-year, you know, example is, is actually not, it's based on actual data. So it's, again, like you said, it's a very, very slim chance that we will not reach the temperature that we need to open the pool. And perhaps in that case, then we have to delay the pool opening. We have to send out a blast or something and say it was extremely cold weather, we can't open until 10 o'clock today, or, or something like that. That could be an option.
Great, thanks. And one other question. Sound, we're talking about sound, and Vice Mayor Taylor, I really appreciate that you emphasized that, you know, the Belle Haven community is dealing with so many other sound impacts, as well as air, air quality and air pollution impacts. And I'm curious about that substation, having that on the map and realizing that there's a substation there with transformers, with a lot of other things happening. It just made me question, is that also adding to why we're now going over the, the, you know, the mounts that we're allowed to go over for decibels?
We, oh, this is Ethan Salter. We just evaluated noise from the traffic using the available noise information at the site for that. The flip station is a different source that.
Mr. Salter, we're having difficulty hearing you.
My apologies. The traffic noise was only evaluated for the site in question, the MPC site, MPCC site, not the homes next to it, since those were outside the project envelope.
Those are my questions. I'll pass it on to the other council members.
So actually, we have, I have received a request to take a quick break, to allow folks to use the restroom and stretch their legs for a moment. So we're going to reconvene at 8:50. We'll do a nine-minute break and then continue this item. So thank you.
Okay, having our city council back on our virtual and in-person days, Mayor Wilson, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you for members of the public for bearing with us for that break. Councilmember Door just concluded, I believe, her questions for now. And I want to turn it over to my other colleagues if they have questions or comments at this time. Okay, Councilmember Nash.
So I just want to say, I share the concern about the fact that the pool cover was not included in the initial assessment pool covers, as I'm sure the pool operator knows, are very, very standard, and would certainly be used both for safety and for efficiency of the water temperature. efficiency of the water temperature. So I'm disturbed that that was not taken into account from the beginning. Having and then having said that, I think all my other questions have been answered. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you for all the extra work looking into various alternatives.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to make sure I understand where we are in the process and what's being asked of council. So the city initially submitted this use permit request because it thought that the nighttime noise levels would exceed in some instances or sometimes limits on noise levels. And that use permit was denied by the planning commission. But what the city is now saying, the recommendation from staff, is that for the council to also deny the use permit request that it submitted, right? And it is because the city is saying that it no longer needs it. And that if it does need it, then it thinks that it has a a spectrum of mitigations that it is able to rely on. But what the city is essentially saying is though, just let us do what we were going to do in the first place. And without the use permit request that you wanted initially. So I think that that fact pattern, and if it's correct, if it's incorrect, someone please call me out and let me know that it is incorrect. But that fact pattern is challenging for me to accept at this moment. Because again, at one point, you thought this was necessary. You got denied by the planning commission. Now you're saying it's not necessary. But there's really no change in your project. And and again, just to reiterate, you're saying that like, if it is needed, then you think that you have some options. And I think the message that gets sent to residents is that like, you just have to deal with it. In 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 fingers crossed that this is going to work out. But you can please tell me I'm wrong about all of this, and that's totally fine.
Yes. So the difference is that initially, we wanted the flexibility to be able to use the heat pumps anytime of day or night. But after hearing the feedback from the planning commission and the public, we understood that we, nobody wants us to run the heat pumps at night. The noise ordinance cannot be exceeded. So then we went back and redid the model and said that our assumption, our base assumption is that the heat pumps are turned off at night. And we're finding that we can, with this revised model, not turn the heat pumps on at all at night, and we can still meet the opening temperatures except for extremely rare situations. So we are proposing that we, after construction, we go out and take live measurements just to confirm. We want to make sure that, you know, the data is out there. We have actual data to show people. And they understand that, you know, it's it's real data. It's not just us telling you that the model is different. And then we will take action from there. So again, we don't have to run the heat pumps at night. If we're going to test, test them, test the system once, once the pools are filled and once the heat pumps are installed.
And so then one of the changes you're saying now is the operation.
Yes.
Is that but then, again, if if push comes to shove and you have angry residents who want a heated pool, it seems as though all that will be there will be, everything will be the same to possibly cause the the noise and sound concerns that that residents in this area have as it relates to this project. And so, again, it's just to say that like, we're trusting you. And we're trusting the conditions in the future, and the pressure you might be under will not be to the extent to which you will feel the obligation to run it at night. Or that if you if you do, then again, you have you have these these additional mitigations.
Right.
And so I just, I just think it's important, for for one, I'm supportive of the city's request to deny the use permit that it requested. So just to be clear there, but the overall scenario is is one where again, is I'm challenged and I can understand the concerns of the neighbors. I will also just point out one commentary, which I believe is is necessary. Based on the comments here, it's not clear to me who this very advanced sort of heating system was for. And of which I know the city paid a lot more money for. And of which now it seems as though what we're seeing is that like, the big thing is that we won't have to use it as much as we thought we would. This really fancy heating thing that is, yeah, the latest technology and that costs extra money. It's like what we're banking on now is that, oh, we really won't have to use it as much as we thought because we'll have a cover. Not very advanced technology and and because we only think we'll need it on the CODIS days.
Actually, if I may, so it will be used quite a bit during the day. And we can go back to the model perhaps, but it shows that the heat pump is on quite a bit. We're just making sure that it's off at nighttime. So we still are running it for hours every day.
So again, the thing we paid extra money for and represented new technology, we're now saying we can't run it at night unless we build a quarter of a million dollar fence. Or unless we do all of these other other things. It just for me is, and and again, this is, this is decisions that we made as a council. I'm looking at you, but I'm looking at myself too. That I think again, for me, as I sit here, it's just, it's just kind of like, you know, very challenging. One question I would have is I know that currently now, like, right, city ordinance prohibits new pools from being constructed with gas powered heating systems. Is that is that correct? And so private residents have to do something similar to what we're doing if they want their pool heated. Have we had any issues of of concerns of noise or any or just sort of functionality that has come through that that process by which, again, this is why I always say the government should do something, put impose a rule on itself and go through that whole process before it imposes a rule on residents. Because we've imposed this rule on residents and and I just want to know what do we understand what the impact has been as it relates to not allowing people to make use of any gas powered heating for for their pools. And it's not an issue with me. I don't have a pool. But, you know, some people in middle part do, I hear.
I can take that question. So there is an existing standard in the zoning ordinance. It's been in effect for quite a while. Certainly predates the the new requirements for electric heating equipment, but it requires whole noise emitting equipment be enclosed in soundproof enclosures. So that has been in effect, you know, prior to electric heating pumps. And would continue to be implemented for for new heaters.
But in theory, we didn't exercise a similar restriction or limitation for ourselves with our own heating equipment, which is again, why why we're here, right? That's fine. That was rhetorical. Thanks.
If I may, sorry, I was going without decorum. And I appreciate the the exploratory line of questioning that Councilmember Combs was was headed down. And I also want to bring us back to the current situation that we have where we have a very confined space, given how the MPCC has been built, where we have availability to put this sized kind of heat pump. I also note that heat pumps became popular in the 1970s and have been around since the 1800s. And so it's not that new field of technology, but anyways, so we have these there. We need to put them in. And I think I want to make a clarification with the public because I think people might be scared that we're saying hot pools are more important than sound and peace and, you know, the health of people. And I want to remind all of us, and I actually asked this question of the city manager, what happens if, you know, this project would go over the sound ordinance? Does that mean that people just have to deal with this? And he told me, no, we would just not, you cannot run them because there's an ordinance preventing us to do that. And so it's not saying, are we choosing sound versus pool? We're saying there's no sound. We're not going to compromise on the sound. The only thing that might be compromised on is some mornings, we might have a cooler pool that we can't open for a few hours. Or and we add these mitigation measures to reduce the sound overnight as well as during the day for residents who are right near there. But I want to be clear to the public that we're not talk, I don't think it's a decision about whether or not we are saying that people should deal with excessive noise because there are ordinances that the city is also in sharing this back with us, saying, we will not go beyond that. And I just want to make sure that's there.
So I didn't see my question as exploratory. I saw it as very much rooted in the situation that's before us. So I just want to make that 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 very clear.
Okay, Vice Mayor Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. I have a few follow-up questions, and one actually came in from a resident in that area. And this may be in the staff report. Can the heat pump be installed underground?
No, the heat pumps require free airflow all around them to work. The way that they work is by taking flow from the, I'm sorry, taking air from the ambient or from the outside and compressing it, warming it, and then putting it into the water. So it needs free airflow around. It cannot be underground.
Thank you. And since there is discussion about putting a fence that shares a property line with PG&E, so where where's PG&E in this discussion? What are their thoughts?
So there is an existing fence on that on the property line already. So we are assuming and hoping that it would be a more straightforward approach to replace an existing fence.
And was there any, I'm sorry, if you weren't done.
No, go ahead, please.
Thank you. And was there, I believe it was the noise consultant that they only studied the noise from the freeway. And so is there any sound that comes from the PG&E station?
It's likely that there is. If we were to conduct the live noise measurements after the pool and the equipment is installed, then it would take the noise measurements of, you know, the the ambient noise that would include all of the sources.
Thank you. And I believe I have a few more follow-up questions. Let's give me one moment. And the the fence, I'm not looking at the staff report, that is more about absorptive far as the noise or is that reflective? The fence that's being recommended.
Yeah, it's a sound absorbing fence.
And then with the the outreach that was done, the limited outreach that was done, was there a I'm not sure what what was shared with the community members, but was there a discussion about how the, or should I say what was shared? Actually, that's my question. What was shared with the community members? I'm guessing that you only went to Terminal Avenue, but if that could be shared with me.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the question. Sean Reinhardt, Library and Community Services Director. The outreach to the residents primarily directed them to participate in the planning commission discussions on this item and tonight's city council meeting. And so information that was shared was really from those sources, from the staff reports and studies that accompanied those meetings.
And so there wasn't any information or education about the process that was shared, only what was at the planning commission meeting?
Just want to make sure I understand the question, the process.
So it, for me, I'm looking, I look for even a diagram of a heat pump. So just information, education about what the city was proposing specifically that would have an impact on noise.
Oh, thank you for the clarification. So there was some information that was shared, I think it was actually in the presentation tonight, which showed the the rings of sound that would be emitted from the air source heat pumps. It was kind of a diagram with a couple of rings. That piece of information was distributed on paper to residents on Del Norte Avenue. But because there's quite a bit more information kind of around this issue, they were referred to the planning commission and the city council report for more information.
Thank you. And my my next question is about the hybrid option, if that's possible. So I'm not sure if that's a question for Ms. Teresa? Or if someone on the project team, one of the consultants?
Could you please clarify what you mean by the hybrid?
So it, or should I say, is there a hybrid option where it would be a combination of solar and gas? Since the source of the noise is the heat pump, which is electric. What if we did not put a heat pump in and it was gas?
I might ask. Okay. I'm going to ask our pool designer that question.
Yes, for for gas heater, it's ecology for natural gas is similar with the heater or the boiler in in residential house. So it's pretty quiet. However, it's still have a little hum, but it's it will be indoor, so the noise will be reduced if we replace the air source heat pump with the the natural gas pump, natural gas heater.
And would that change any of the what has already been completed? Would there need to be modifications to the existing plan?
Yes, I'll ask Sherrell from Meta to speak to that one.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time this evening and allowing me to speak. My name is Sherrell Jarrett. I'm with Meta. And if I understood your question correctly, you're asking if there could be a hybrid option of having gas and electric. So bid the who's with PACE, their pool consultant, I think just said that there's not necessarily a hybrid option. And if we were to convert to gas at this point instead of electric, then there would be a lot of infrastructure changes that would be necessary. We currently have the all the infrastructure that's necessary to provide the electric heating for these pools to serve the air source heat pumps and also the solar thermal piping for the solar thermal heat pumps that we we've been discussing.
Thank you. I appreciate the information, Ms. Gerald. And I'm I'm asking because as one of the council members who actually approved the project from the beginning without even consideration for not just how the pool was going to be heated, but also the impacts from heated in a way, heating the pool in a way that wouldn't cause additional air quality concerns. And so looking at that decision, which I believe was about four years ago or maybe less, I'm looking at other options because as someone who goes to the project area three days a week, I hear the noise level there. And that's only for a 45 minute period. So I can't imagine what it is if you're, you know, home, whether it's eight to 24 hours a day, what you experience, the combination of sound there. So I'm asking the question to see what other options that they there are. For me, 49 decimals is still too loud. And so I'm just looking at what else we can do because I would like to see a pool there, an operating pool, a heated pool. So I'm just asking for some other options. So thank you so much.
Of course.
Vice Mayor Taylor, was there anything else you'd like to say?
There is, but it actually addresses. There is, but it actually addresses the other noise factors. So if we want to
Why don't you go ahead and share what you want to share? Because I think what I'd like to do is have you speak, and then everyone can share their thoughts on this item, and then we can see if we can reach an agreement.
Thank you. So I'll start off first with the noise from the freeway. I do not have the exact date. I believe it was two thousand and eleven. The city council at that time adopted a resolution to look at ways to complete the sound wall. Well, in light of the new Department of Transportation funding, I see this as an opportunity with new federal grants that target racist highway legacy. So just thinking about how the one-on-one freeway went in and which community was split from the rest of the city. I'm hoping that there is opportunity for the city to actually apply for some of that funding and not just to complete the wall from the Terminal Street out to Marsh Road, but actually look at Willow Road all the way to Marsh Road, because it's an issue on both ends. The second is now looking at the air traffic. I am on the San Francisco, the SFO Roundtable. And we are advocating to collect data through having a noise monitor. We've had it in the community once in the past, so advocating for that to happen again, specifically residents that are near the freeway have mitigation measures because of noise. And so the advocacy that I'm asking for at the roundtable level is that it is taken in consideration also for arrival flights, because we're on the arrival path. So that's the second. And the PG&E substation, since there has not ever been a noise study done in that area, I would hope that whichever the next one is coming, that it would be comprehensive and it wouldn't exclude anything. I can't imagine living next to a substation or PG&E, not just because of the aesthetics, but if the impacts of it haven't been studied, that alone concerns me. And, and I've already shared my concerns about the heat pump. I, I look at the lowest decimal on this chart, which is thirty-five. And to me, that would be the number I would try to reach. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So at this point, I would, I would love it if folks could share their thoughts on the matter before us. And actually, to help us, I would request staff what feedback, what decisions are we making tonight? Can you please project that slide once again? And while you're bringing that up, does somebody want to share where they're at with this project? Councilmember Dor, please.
Yes, thank you. Because our community deserves to not have added sound at night, nor added air pollution. Because we have new information that our city staff put together with a new consultant to figure out that we could use heat syncing and a cover to reduce the need to use the heat pumps. Only under extreme, extreme conditions would it need to be done. And in those instances, it could I'm gonna re-say that, only in extreme conditions would there be a need to use the heat pumps, and we can still choose to not use them. And because our climate action plan requires us to use renewable, cleaner, and cheaper fuel sources, such as through this air source heat pump, I would advocate for moving forward to uphold the planning commission's denial of the use permit, so to not allow us to exceed the requirements for fifty decibels limit at night. To go full speed ahead with sound studies to ensure that to understand, you know, the impact during the day, and if it would be additionally harmful to do at night, but not doing it, not having it on at night. And I would give conditional approval to the city staff to pursue installing a sound wall with the full community engagement of the eleven household residences that would be impacted directly by that wall, either in their backyard or work with them to decide what the best option for that wall would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dor. Vice Mayor Taylor, is that hand up, a new hand up or an old hand up?
An old hand, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Not an old hand, but I gotta laugh. Thanks. Okay, anyone else ready to make a comment? Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I, just for the record, we've already purchased the heat pumps, right? So I think, I think it's sort of, you know, sort of clarifies what the optionality here is. Everything has already been purchased and essentially it's just ready to be put in place. The decision has already been made. What did not happen was a complete understanding of the impacts of those decisions. And the decisions were made to service an agenda. It's not clear to me. It was the agenda of the residents in Bell Haven. And at the same time, as we as a council, talk a lot on this side of town about noise pollution and our desire to spin up projects that will cost millions of dollars to mitigate noise pollution that we did not cause as a city, we seem to be incredibly comfortable with enforcing noise pollution on some residents in the city. And so that's not exploratory. That's the situation. And so I am supportive of moving forward because I don't really think that there's any other option. And I'm supportive of, of, of denying the use permit request and hoping that the city and these options that have been presented will allow us to mitigate to some extent the, the noise, both during the day and at night. But yeah, I think, I think it's clear, like, everything is in place here. The equipment has been purchased. There's really only one route forward, and our hope is, is that like, again, that like, there will be some mitigations that, that, that will be impactful.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. Councilmember Nash?
So I agree with the idea of moving forward, getting everything in place, getting real measurements, seeing how the pool cover works and not running the pump at night if it exceeds the noise ordinance. I also think an option is if the pool is cooler on some days, then people just swim in a cooler pool and make that decision themselves. So I think that there seems to be numerous options here. But I do think it makes sense to move forward as designed. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. So it sounds like on the dais, there's consensus. I'm joining in with my colleagues' comments and echoing them primarily with moving forward, given all the reasons that have been discussed. I'd also be in support of pursuing the, if, if to doing conversations with the residents, if they want to have the wall and pursuing that proactively, even if it's not going to be triggered with the noise ordinance, but as a quality of life benefit, given the substation and the other noise impacts, if that's something that they deem desirable. And then I do think this brings up interesting questions about just our noise ordinance levels. And a lot of conversations have come up just around noise ordinances and fifty decibels. And I mean, personally, I would love a, like, a tutorial, like, in-person live tutorial of different decibel levels. A lot of this is talking in the abstract, and this is like a conversation potentially for another day, but I'm not sure how, who arrived at fifty and like what that experience is like, but that's kind of what we have to work with right now. And if we start tinkering project by project with that level and saying this is acceptable and this isn't acceptable, it's going to open up a lot. I know we have another agenda item tonight that has a noise impact concern, so I feel like if our city code is fifty decibels, of course, we want, you know, the least noise impact for our residents, but kind of that's what we're working with. So it sounds like there's kind of a consensus growing. Vice Mayor Taylor, before anyone makes a motion, I just want to turn it over to you for kind of the final word and let us know kind of where you're at. And if you want to make a motion, or if you want someone on the dais to do so.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. And I appreciate all of the feedback, conversation, input, direction that the council has shared, which is one of the reasons why I called this up. And then also, just, and if I'm not mistaken, the noise ordinance lives within the safety element? I'm not mistaken, which is why I've had to push for a couple of years to actually to update it. Because we are not doing noise monitoring, we don't know what the best decimal is for our residents, especially those that already deal with noises already. I, in this conversation, decided to bring the other noise factors in because it hasn't been discussed. And I think that it's important because regardless of the sound of a heat pump, this is the daily noise that folks are experiencing. So I'm hoping that there is support to, to direct staff to look into what one of the, I'm not sure if it's a grant, I'm not sure how the funding is being utilized. But to look at the funding to complete the wall between Willow Road and Marsh Road, because it is an issue with or without a heat pump. The second is, for me, I, I looked at whatever the lowest decimal is on the staff report, which was thirty-five. That would be my target, not forty-nine for any, for any community realistically. And then what is my, my other comment? I thought that there was a slide being put up by staff. Or did I miss it?
It went up for a little while, and then it went back.
Okay.
Here it comes.
Thank you. I don't think it was that one.
And the direction we're seeking tonight.
Okay. So as far as the fence, I believe that since there was already outreach that was done, that more needs to actually happen around what the community that lives there wants to see, and also the neighboring community. I believe there was a restriction, whatever that ring was, that was decided based on the noise measurements that were done. I think it needs to be broader, because there are folks that would be impacted that live, you know, maybe two houses down from the houses that are on Del Norte, or even on Terminal. So I believe that is all that I have to add, Mayor Wilson.
Thank you. So a question for staff then, in our motion to adopt a resolution, there's some additional direction that we may want to give in addition to kind of upholding the planning commission's denial. I'm in support, and I don't know if there's a third person who's in support of pursuing direction for completing a wall. Okay, I'm seeing a nod. I'm seeing nods. So directing staff to come back with information about how we can get that going and get that done. And then secondarily, what else did I put here? Directing staff to pursue engaging with the community with a slightly larger geography while adjacent about, you know, including them. And Vice Mayor Taylor, are you commenting, or is that?
Just one thing to add, Mayor Wilson, and that is I want to be included in the outreach efforts this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So, so if we have consensus around kind of those added directions, is me, if, are the nods you see on the dais sufficient in that, or do we need to include them in a motion?
Let's see, just procedurally, I think it's best to kind of act first on the use permit, and then we can deal with direction. And I think it may be worthwhile to recap what that direction is. So do you want to act first on the use permit?
I'm seeing there might be some more questions. No? Okay, so I think then it would behoove us to go ahead. Does somebody want to make a motion on the use permit piece, so we can put that one? I'll go ahead and, oh, Vice Mayor Taylor, would you like to make the motion?
Mayor Wilson, if you make the motion, I'll second.
Okay, fabulous. So I will make the motion to adopt a resolution to deny the use permit.
A second.
Thank you. Let me just get the correct language here. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Wilson and a second by Vice Mayor Taylor to adopt a resolution to uphold the planning commission's denial of the use permit to allow the heat pumps to exceed the nighttime noise ordinance. And do we need to include the remaining bullets of this recommendation in the motion? Looking to staff. Okay. Any further city council question or discussion?
Actually, I have, I'm sorry, I do have one question, and that's, are that, I did not catch whether the other bullets are included in this?
There would be two separate motions, so the motion for the use permit denial, and then a separate motion for direction.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess I would ask staff then, given the conversation we've had, can you recap what you think the direction that we've been heading for you to have is? And thank you for paying close attention to things we say up here.
Okay, so the motion would be to move forward with the wall, to perform outreach and and to add more people and more residences into that limit, who would potentially get a wall? Excuse me.
I'd just like to clarify something. Everyone on the dais cares about reducing the sound pollution. And something I personally want to see is, is I want to make sure that this doesn't get slow rolled back to us if there is a need for those mitigation measures. Or usefulness of that even during daytime hours to reduce the sound that people face. And so I'm curious if there is something more, some other kind of conditional approval of pursuing the, oh gosh, the mitigation measures that we can give staff so that process can be streamlined at all. I don't know who that question is to, but someone on staff, please.
Let's see, so a big, big, it's important to kind of understand what it is that the council's looking to achieve, but in terms of a big component would be funding, because anything from this point forward, there's, there's no funding identified. So I think it's a matter of identifying what it is that's desired, and then we would need to come back with potential funding options through the budget process, unless there's a specific fund identified tonight, for example, but otherwise, there's no there's, there's nothing specifically available per se for this project. Like, this is above and beyond, it's beyond the project scope. So we'd have to come back at one of the June meetings.
I think we can continue or down the direction. I mean, is that satisfactory to you, City Manager Murphy, that? Or does that answer your question, Councilmember?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Nash?
So I guess I'm not clear whether we're talking about the wall.
So I guess I'm not clear whether we're talking about the wall next to the residents, the wall next to the MPCC or a sound wall or some other wall. So just, um, and I don't need an answer tonight, just so that it, we clarify that when it comes back.
My, my understanding was we wanted to provide the, either the property line or the substation, uh, along, um, Del Norte, something for the Del Norte people between them and the MPCC, um, in acknowledgement that even if we're just at 50 decibels or 49 decibels, that they are having a lot of impacts from noise. So we wanted to address that. And then I think there's a second issue, which is the wall along the freeway between Willow and Marsh, which is what we want staff to add to project list and, and pursue. So I guess.
That's not my understanding. Uh,
Oh, okay.
A, a sound wall between Willow and Marsh is a Caltrans project, is it not? Is, is that, that something would be in the Caltrans right of way?
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Combs. Nikki Nagaya, Deputy City Manager. Um, so the, while that would be within Caltrans right of way, our understanding of Caltrans policy is that they will not construct additional sound walls unless they're doing work that necessitates it and they prove that through a noise study. And so in this case, we think that if the council's direction is to pursue a sound wall along the freeway from Willow to Marsh and close the remaining gaps, that would be a city-led project, city-funded, but we'd have to work with Caltrans in order, excuse me, uh, in order to, to see it through the, the process.
Okay. So if I can, m- my understanding was a wall in connection with the sound we believe will be generated from the, the, the heat pumps. Um, if we are going to explore sound walls along the freeway, then that has to be larger than just between Marsh and Willow on the east, north or side of the city, because on the other side of the freeway, there is lots of places where there are, are no sound walls. Um, from Marsh a- all the way up until like, uh, like the suburban park community, there is no sound walls, there is just fences. And of course, as we know, along Bay Road, that there, there is also fences. And so if the city is in the sound wall business, then like I have lots to say about that, but I would be very much opposed to the council at this moment saying that it is only certain spots where there is no sound wall, that it is, is, is willing to engage in a project or have a discussion about a project.
Yeah, I appreciate you elevating that point and, um, I would be open to all sound wall freeway discussions. So it wasn't meant to be exclusive. I think it was just responding, but I, I hear you. Um, so I don't know if we're unraveling or having scope creep here. Um, uh, I see Vice Mayor Taylor's hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. And it was, it was helpful to clarify which wall. Um, there's one wall that's specific to the project, um, that would be funded by the city. The sound wall, what my recommendation is, is to look at the funding that's available. So the city potentially wouldn't be paying for anything, but they would be leading the project. And I believe I've shared this information with the city manager. And if I haven't, I, I definitely will.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. I think we keep returning to similar themes on the dais, um, about we had our goal setting, which was high level. Um, I think we're kind of used to talking about projects and bringing new projects forward, whether it be El Camino or Bay Road or, or sound walls. Um, and I think this kind of goes back to policies and procedures and how do we introduce projects that are of grave importance to our residents? Um, I don't know if we're going to resolve that tonight during public hearing I one. Um, but I think if we're compiling a list of kind of things we want to come back to us and address for our residents, it should definitely be on that list. And then we need as a council to, you know, clean up our act and figure out how we're going to discuss these in a fair, um, and, and transparent and level playing field, um, within our, our process. So, um, given that Vice Mayor Taylor, are you comfortable then if we take the conversation around freeway sound walls and kind of put it in that bucket, kind of where my El Camino idea came in and, uh, Councilmember Combs, Bay Road and lots of other things that we want to do?
That is fine, as long as it's not another 12 years that we have the discussion.
I don't want to wait 12 years either. So, um, thank you. So thank you for that, Vice Mayor Taylor. So going back to, um, I one and in scope. So, um, now that we are all hopefully knowing what we're talking about, um, so the staff had said, a- as a mitigation after the fact, if there is a noise issue, they could do a wall, a, a fence, we'll call this one the fence, um, between the Del Norte residents and MPCC. Are, are we still okay with pursuing that, um, now kind of as a acknowledgement of impact to those residents? Uh, Councilmember Combs?
Uh, ju- just so I'm making sure, back to the city manager, you still don't have funding for the fence either, right? To be clear, th- th- that is not funded. And so I, I am, I am s- supportive of the idea, but, but also understanding that, that there isn't m- money that at this point is designated toward, towards that.
Um, I've, I believe what the city manager was thinking is he would present to us some funding options during the budget process, um, potentially from, um, the Bayfront Mitigation Fund or the Measure T. I, I don't know, um, Community Amenities. Sorry, I don't know what they're all called anymore. Um, and then, so it's not a pro, I guess we're not promising the wall yet. It still has to make it through the hurdle of the budget appropriation. So stay tuned. But, um, all things being equal, we would like to do that. We just have to see, um, if we can figure out where to pull that money from. Is that accurate, City Manager Murphy?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, okay. Great. So we've made it through, I think, the first direction, which is let's put something in the budget conversation around this wall. And then if it does look like we have the money for it, engage with those residents, potentially widen the radius, but, um, maybe work with Councilmember Taylor on where that radius line should be, I, I would suggest. Um, and, um, then follow the other, um, points on the slide, I think, which is install the heat pumps, uh, conduct the live measurements of sound if they are exceeded, um, either, well, come back to us, but don't heat the pool, um, a- at night. So people have to swim cold five times every 50 to 100 years. Um, so, um, was there any other direction we wanted to give, uh, staff on I one? Was there any other direction you heard us contemplating that you don't think we've beaten with a dead horse up here? Okay. So, um, then I think we need, yes, Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you. Uh, my apologies for waiting so late. Uh, with the measurements, I'm hoping that you're not going to use the average. That is the actual measurement.
Firm, I believe you said you were going to go to each place along Del Norte. Um, and I believe that if it exceeds any one, it would trip the, the issue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if the radius is, is broader, those homes will be included as well?
Um, they could be, yes. Although I think they're outside of the, that area of, um, impact, uh, if you say the 50 decibel ring. But if we're widening the, um, the scope, then we can include those as well.
That would be helpful. And I, and I think it's wise, um, just to make sure.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, then it sounds like you'd like another motion with that direction. So I believe it's, um, I'll go ahead and move it again, just to move it. Um, the, the three additional bullet points on the slide, um, maybe with an acknowledgement that if it, that we're not running it at night and that if it does tip it, then it's cold pool in the morning. I don't know if you can throw in something like that. Um, and then direction to pursue a fence slash wall with, um, the direction we've already talked about. So I'll, I'll move that if that is comprehensible to staff. So is there a second?
I would second and maybe adding the clarification in that, that, that process for the sound fence is with the community engagement, including active involvement of Vice Mayor, uh, Taylor.
Thank you. I'm happy to take that amendment.
Okay. Give me one moment to formulate this motion, please. Okay, so. I have a motion by Mayor Wilson and a second by, uh, City Councilmember Dower. And this is to direct staff to install the heat pumps as currently designed to conduct a live measurements of sound during the commissioning and testing period before the pool opening, no use of the pump at night, and broadening the radius of residents impacted by the noise, and include Vice Mayor Taylor in public outreach. Did I, I'm sure that direction? Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Taylor? Okay. Fabulous. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Thank you, residents, um, who have raised your concerns. I hope you feel like we treated them with care and, um, we appreciate you being part of these conversations. Makes our community stronger. Thank you. All right. Take a deep breath. And we're moving on to our second public hearing of the night, which is I too consider a city council call up of the planning commission's decision to approve a use permit for live entertainment, onsite consumption of alcohol, and outdoor seating until 2:00 AM for the proposed restaurant use and architectural control for exterior modifications to the existing commercial building, including modifications to the storefront along El Camino Real frontage and a new deck and trellis area in the rear of the building to accommodate outdoor dining for the proposed restaurant located at 961 El Camino Real. And to introduce this item is our Associate Planner Fatim Khan. Please, Ms. Khan.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson, uh, Honorable Councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. I am Associate Planner Fatim Khan. We're here tonight to review the call up for 961 El Camino Real, also known as Clockworks. Per Menlo Park Municipal Code Section 16.86.025, city council or any member of the city council may call up any final decision of the planning commission within 15 days of the planning commission action. On April 23rd, staff receive notification for a call up. The call up will allow discussion and clarification on the project set before us tonight. The city council may uphold, modify, or reverse the planning commission's action or deny the proposed project in whole or in part. Um, I will quickly go over tonight's overview. We will start off with staff.
Oh, excuse me, um, Ms. Khan, we, um, had some confusion over the ordering and we're not doing it in that order.
Uh, that is correct. Uh, if I may, uh, City Clerk Judy, this would be the inaccurate PowerPoint presentation. I believe the accurate one is on box if you do not mind, uh, looking at that. Apologies for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Just give me a little bit to pull up the most current. Thank you. Apologies for that. We're, uh, now on the correct PowerPoint presentation and correct slide.
Thank you. That looks right.
Okay, great. So, uh, I'll quickly go over tonight's overview. Uh, we will first start off with staff introduction, which I've already heard, and, uh, presentation, which, uh, is ongoing currently, followed by Councilmember Nash's comments. Then we'll introduce the applicant and, uh, go over his presentation. Then we'll come back to Councilmember Nash, uh, to see if there are further comments. We'll then open it for public comment. Then we'll bring it back to the dais for city council discussion and hopefully end with an action and motion. Moving on to the next slide, the proposed project is a restaurant, which is a permitted use at 961 El Camino Real, which is near the intersection of Menlo Avenue and El Camino Real at the formal location of Clockworks. The restaurant is requesting use permit for live entertainment, onsite consumption of alcohol, outdoor seating until 2:00 AM. The project also requires an architectural control for the proposed exterior modifications. Modifications include changes to the storefront and addition of a new deck and trellis to the back. Next slide, please. On April 10th, the planning commission approved the use permit and architectural control requests with a condition of approval. The condition was to bring back the project for planning commission's review 12 months after occupancy, uh, to review complaints of disturbances related to the live entertainment use between 12:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Next slide, please. Oh, 11:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Staff recommends that the city council uphold the planning commission's approval with modifications to end the indoor live entertainment at 11:00 PM as previously recommended by staff to the planning commission. Staff has received upwards of 70 letters in support and four with concerns. Next slide, please. As a reminder, the city council may uphold, modify, or reverse planning commission's action. City council has the ability to consider additional performance standards, conditions, or limitations on the request for live entertainment, alcohol sales associated with the restaurant, and outdoor seating. With that, I conclude my presentation before handing it over for the applicant's presentation and also to Councilmember Nash. I'm happy to take any comments or questions.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. So we are now going to go to our appellant, which is, um, Councilmember Betsy Nash. So I'm turning it over to her. Thank you.
Thank you. And first of all, I want to thank everyone who has sent in comments and everyone who's in the audience and listening online, um, for hanging in with us, um, on this important topic. So I called up this project for council review because it raised important policy issues that needed to be discussed. Projects of this sort may have dramatic impacts on nearby residents and others in the community, particularly when the city approves late night operations that are close to residential neighborhoods. I'm happy to report that after many conversations this afternoon, the applicant, Jamie DeLisandro and his partners agreed to the following proposal, which makes some modifications to what the planning commission approved. which makes some modifications to what the planning commission approved. For use permits, the resident is permitted, I'm sorry, the restaurant is permitted to operate until 2:00 AM per the municipal code. We agreed that alcohol may be served until 2:00 AM. The outdoor seating, the tables may be seated until 10:00 PM and the outdoor area must be cleared by 11:00 PM. For live entertainment on weekdays, which is Sunday through Thursday, live music ends at 11:30 PM. On weekends, Fridays and Saturdays, live music ends at 1:00 AM. Two minor clarifications about the operations. All live entertainment will be indoors and acoustic unamplified, so it should be within the noise ordinance indoors. The outdoor seating will be 32 seats, not eight tables, and this has already been reflected in the staff report. And the municipal noise ordinance, which we've just heard so much about in the last item, does apply at all times. And I'm actually very excited about this project and having a new restaurant in town that will add to the vibrancy, and I look forward to approving it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. I would now like to invite the applicant, G. M. Alessandro, to address the city council. Please, Mr. Alessandro.
Thank you, Mayor. Is that better? How are you guys doing? Tired? Thank you, Mayor Willison and council members. I'll be very, very brief. I already ran through this with the commission in April. But what you see there is the Clockworks building. Menlo Clockworks, as you may well know, has been operating for over 40 years. In the bulk of the building, to the left, to the south of Clockworks, what shows is available is a small rectangular space that was previously office space for the general contractor of the neighboring guild. And some of you who grew up around here may remember the old Papa's baseball card shop. Next slide. Just give a quick bit of overview. As many of you know, this restaurant's being proposed by myself and two partners, Haney Nada and Drew Dunleavy. The three of us are three local guys. We've lived here for almost 60 years. Just simply share a common vision to bring a high quality restaurant to downtown and add to the vibrancy. We envision high quality food and beverage offerings and limited live entertainment offerings. Also here tonight are the building owners and current operators of the business, Alex and Sharon Deli, who have run their business out of that location for over 40 years. So they're there in support as well. Next slide. Just a very quick bit of project history. We submitted our application maybe nine months ago. Early April, we went to planning commission and upon the presentation and the staff's recommendation, the planning commission unanimously approved our project. There was a required radius mailer that went out. No public comments were received at the planning commission regarding the project. The staff report indicated findings of approval for everything that's already been cited by Fatin. And I think it was also noted that restaurants also, by writing the code, are allowed to operate till 2:00 AM. The COA has already been discussed. And as I think you well know, there have been many letters of support between then and now. I think the tally is probably closer to 150. Next slide. I just want to point out a couple of quick things as backstory. Obviously, everyone's very familiar with the downtown specific plan that was adopted in 2012, I think. A lot of goals are in there, including revitalizing underutilized parcels, expanding shopping, dining, neighborhood services, ensuring a vibrant downtown. And what was also cited on more than one occasion was wanting more nightlife businesses where people can spend their evening in Menlo Park versus going somewhere else. I believe the council also commissioned a market study done by HDL a year and a half ago, looking at the market conditions for downtown. And it specifically cited a gap in full service restaurants in the city as compared to neighboring jurisdictions. So we're trying to satisfy that demand and we're excited about doing so. Next slide. The last slide I'll leave up there, this is just a quick conceptual design of what we're working towards. And I think the last thing, I'd like to close with a couple of comments. First, I'd like to clarify some of the mischaracterizations we've unfortunately heard in a few public comments. One, we never contemplated having a nightclub. It's preposterous. As I mentioned before, all we want to do is bring a classy restaurant establishment to town. We also never planned on having late outdoor seedings at this project. Having seedings after the guild gets out outdoors is not something we're looking to do. Two other comments, just as this whole thing has unfolded. Ironically, we all loved the oasis in town for many, many years. They served outdoors on that patio, I believe, till well after midnight. And I think many people lament the loss of the oasis and they're not excited about the decrease in noise, whatever that may be. Additionally, the old Guild Theater showed Rocky Horror Picture Show midnight screenings on numerous occasions. People came out 2:00, 2:30 in the morning. I don't believe there was ever any issue around the exiting and the egress at that hour. You know, in closing, I've been asked about the outreach we've done and I mentioned what was done by way of the radius mailer. But since our initial submittal nine months ago, myself and my two partners have probably had well over 500 conversations from folks that are excited about this project. They're enthusiastic. They heard about it through the grapevine and they're excited about it, about it ultimately coming to Menlo Park. I think the 150-plus letters that have poured in are, I think, a small representation of that enthusiasm. You know, look, we did not ask our supporters to come here tonight. We didn't feel like it was necessary and we didn't feel like it was an appropriate use of anyone's time in this room. The public has very clearly spoken and I appreciate the collaboration and dialogue we've had. And we're excited to bring this to town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alessandro. So now, following the process as outlined correctly, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Nash for an opportunity to respond if she wants to any of the comments.
Thank you. I do want to respond to a couple of comments that were made. Not in any way to change the good place that we are at, but I did want to respond that the mailer that was sent out for the planning commission meeting did not include operating hours and that the staff report that was written again for the planning commission meeting did not focus on the fact that there's residential 17 homes within 55 feet of the outdoor patio. And so I believe that, and as again, there is much concern about noise and just livability in the neighborhood. And so the fact that it was proposed till 2:00 AM, to me, was of great concern. And I'm very happy that we've been able to reach an agreement on that. So with that, I will happily turn it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. So at this point, are there any clarifying questions from the city council before we open it up to the public with our public hearing? Okay, so at this point, I would like to open the public hearing. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item I, too, consider a city council call up for the planning commission's decision to approve a use permit for live entertainment, onsite consumption of alcohol, and outdoor seating until 2:00 AM for the proposed restaurant use and architectural control for exterior modifications to the existing commercial building, including modifications to the storefront along the El Camino Real frontage and a new deck and trellis area in the rear of the building to accommodate outdoor dining for the purpose or the proposed restaurant located at 961 El Camino Real. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landliner cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me at the clerk's desk. And our first speaker will be Ray Mueller.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, so my name is Ray Mueller. I'm a Menlo Park resident. It's thank you to the council members and the mayor for allowing me to speak to you this evening. At the outset, I want to thank the applicants for bringing this project and for the work that they're doing to revitalize our El Camino Real corridor and bringing much-needed, a much-needed restaurant near the guild with late night food. It is a risk for a business owner to be doing so and very, very excited about it being there. Jamie sort of stole my thunder in talking about the fact that the oasis had been there and frankly offered similar services and it's something that Menlo Park has missed since then. So I very much just want to express my support for this project. I'm very happy to hear the compromise and I just want to encourage the rest of the council members to please adopt that compromise. Don't make this project more difficult. We have a very young, a very young entertainment district that's here in downtown Menlo Park. It'll actually be great to go there on weeknights and listen to acoustic music during the agreed upon hours when the guild is not open and really continue to establish what is being built there, which is, I think, just vital to the future of the downtown. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Judy Lee, followed by Sherry Zazowski.
Mayor Willison, City Council. Council Nash, I want to thank you for discussing with the proposed client or restaurateur changing the hours for the operation. 2:00 AM on a weeknight was much too late for the people that are living, as you say, 55 feet away from the music. And I think even 11 is too late. I think 10:00, 10:00 PM is a more realistic time because the people that are living in those apartments, condos, houses need their sleep. And so perhaps they would reconsider and do a 10 on the weeknights. Friday, Saturday could be 11, 12, whatever. But anyway, that would be my concern. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So up next is Sherry Zazowski, followed by Tom Lee.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson and council members. I was delighted to hear in the agenda item that came before this that you take noise issues and quality of life issues very seriously. And I think that this is an excellent improvement for the Clockworks venue, closing the outdoor area. I wasn't clear if that's at 10 or 11, but I think there's still issues that need to be addressed. One issue is that people will be parking in our residential streets all over the downtown area. And since the restaurant will be and bar will be open till 2, that means we'll have people walking around our streets, coming to their cars, slamming car doors. These are people who've been drinking for several hours. We can expect disturbances on a nightly basis seven days a week. Let me point out a difference between what I think is a more similar place to the Clockworks, which would be the British Bankers Club back in the day. And we know there were a lot of issues with people. There were assaults, there was rape, et cetera, people who are drinking for hours on end. But the British Bankers Club made a lot more sense as a location because we have the buffer of El Camino on one side, we have the buffer of Caltrain on the other, of British Bankers Club, and we have businesses on both sides. There were no residents there. And they had a parking lot. So here, Menlo Park's downtown is primarily residential. This is my neighborhood where I've lived for several decades. And I can tell you at night, when things are silent at night and a car door slams or you hear a motor revving, this is going to be waking people up in the downtown. Why do we need 2:00 in the morning and seven days a week? Even Club Fox in Redwood City only opens when they have entertainment there and they typically close between 10 and 11. They never are open past midnight. So I think this project is not a fit for this location in our city. And please, council members, stand for the residents, for our quality of life, for our ability to sleep. One of the things quoted in your staff report is from the specific plan that promotes healthy living. Well, healthy living is not having people in your neighborhood at 2:00 in the morning high-fiving and slamming car doors and revving motors, et cetera. And as far as I'm concerned, encouraging people to have overindulgence in alcohol and driving under the influence doesn't come under the rubric of healthy living either. So think twice, council members. I think this project should not fly as it is. Let them close like all our other restaurants and bars at 10 or 11 every night. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Kristen Lee with donated time from Tom Lee, followed by Steve Eisner.
Hello, City Council. Can you imagine someone putting a bar restaurant in your backyard that would have live entertainment, alcohol, and outdoor dining until 11:00 PM after you need to be asleep? That is happening to me. This new establishment sounds fun, but it needs to have respectful hours. There are 17 homes 55 feet away from the Clockworks property. I have spoken with many of my neighbors and they're concerned that live entertainment and outdoor dining may be permitted until 2:00 AM. Now doctored a little bit earlier, apparently, seven days a week, or five and two. No other place in Menlo Park is open that late. Live entertainment with that kind of permission. Live entertainment and outdoor dining should be permitted until 9:00 PM on Sunday through Thursday and 10:00 PM on Friday to Saturday, closer to what the staff report recommends. Then revelers can enjoy fun nights out and my neighbors and I can have the peace and quality of life that we need. Menlo Park has been my home for 35 years. I was a library commissioner for eight years and I moved to 650 Live Oak two and a half years ago, a haven near downtown Menlo Park. I teach kindergarten. I need a quiet, peaceful home to rest in so that I can give my kind and caring best to my 32 students every day. I can't do that if there is outdoor dining and live entertainment that late 55 feet from my home. Neighbor's sadness at the oasis closure has been mentioned. The bar would have been open there when almost all of them moved in and any neighbors who were glad for the quiet wouldn't have felt the need to share it. Anyone who suggests that the Clockworks project is just like the oasis is misleading you on purpose. 150 enthusiastic emails are not from the people who usually sleep within the sound radius of the proposed bar restaurant. The last bar restaurant in this area that was open that late with similar permits, the BBC brought disturbances and violence. My neighbors and I need safe, peaceful homes to rest and sleep so that we can live happy, productive lives like you do. Our need for a safe, peaceful home is just as important as others' desire for a local good time. There's tons of space on Santa Cruz Avenue farther from people's homes for late night spot. The Guild has done a fantastic job of contributing vibrancy to its neighborhood while respecting neighbors' need for peace. Its exceptional soundproofing allows hardly any sound to escape. The new Clockworks establishment needs to respect its neighbors, too. I'm happy for closed indoor dining with good I'm happy for closed indoor dining with good sound insulation to happen late. But this is a quality of life issue for neighbors. Live entertainment and outdoor dining should be permitted only if it is over by nine PM, Sunday through Thursday and ten PM on Friday through Saturday. I moved into a peaceful home. Please let me stay in one.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Steve Eisner, followed by Pete Colby.
Hello, Council. My name is Steve Eisner. I live at six, seven, six Live Oak. I'm not one of the seventeen with the housing residences within fifty feet, but I'm probably about seventy five yards from the establishment. My primary concern is actually residential parking. But there there are other issues that were brought up quite articulately that I was thinking of sharing from some of the previous speakers. And it's nice to see Councilwoman Nash again. Last time I saw her, she was knocking on my door while she was running for council. So that's a great representative of my area. I actually came before the council when the Guild was proposed for building and Ray Mueller actually was on the council at that time. And I expressed a concern about street parking on Live Oak Avenue. My concerns have come out to be founded and the Guild is a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. I'm supportive. I went to see Mike Campbell and the Dirty Knobs a couple of days ago. Had a great time. But, you know, there it's becoming quite popular, probably three, three times a week right now is performances are going on, which is terrific for the community, but for those living on Live Oak, parking has become really, really difficult because of that. I have a twenty four year old that comes home from work anywhere between five and seven. He has three days on a week when the Guild is 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 on. He has really difficulty, you know, finding street parking. We have a single driveway because, you know, and and he needs to park his car on the driveway because of the night ordinance. And having to walk three, four blocks to get his car and then come in is a real inconvenience. So, yeah, I'm really concerned about street parking on Live Oak as a result. And I did talk to council, then council Councilman Mueller at the time, and he actually thought, well, if parking on Live Oak becomes a problem with the Guild, maybe we should consider residential street parking permits or signs or or something along those lines. And I think it's time for the council to think seriously about doing that on Live Oak. I mean, people aren't going to park on Menlo Avenue. Roble is a little bit far and there's not a lot of street parking there. So Live Oak, it's a wide street. It's natural for people to just come and park. And I do want to second the concerns about late night individuals walking to their cars, you know, making noise, slamming doors, street traffic at one, two in the morning. I mean, I do think it's reasonable for eleven, eleven o'clock, you know, to be a shutting time. And, you know, Mr. Delisander said the public has spoken. I mean, I thought that was a little presumptuous. I don't think the public has fully spoken. You're hearing some members of the public here. So thank you for your time and consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Pete Colby, followed by Lynn Bramlett.
Good evening. My name is Peter Colby. I want you to know I've been in a vehicle accident where I was close to death. I had been hit by a car on a moped and my helmet wasn't on. So I kind of sometimes get pretty nervous. And I wanted to say that under my property management, it's very clear in our contract that it's a state law that at ten thirty, there was no loud noises after ten thirty. And your property manager is pretty much the law if you're an apartment renter. So it teaches you to respect it and you even want to stand up for it and tell your new neighbors not to party. So I wanted to say that the police can be called. It's a state law. Just like you want to call on the state to build a sound wall. I think that's a great idea along the freeway. I've been to Kelly Park. It could use a sound wall behind it. But we have great policemen, but they they need rest. They only come when they're really needed and their quality, I mean, they came for me because I was concerned about child abuse. But let me just say there was a team and they were very respectful. They didn't get me involved. You know, they just they realized I was the one. Okay, so I wanted to say that I think these people around the Guild are really in debt. They're young, kind of limited liability types that have parental money. And I know they asked me, who do you want me to bring to Menlo Park to play? And I thought, oh, I'm kind of old. Maybe you could remember, you know, so and so. I've been to a show there. It's just totally technological sound. Everybody puts their earplugs in that's knows where they're going, but I didn't have any at the time. Anyway, I'm just going to say that I've been recycling cardboard for twenty five years for money in my past. And I know the BFI, the recology people are true blooded American. They may look like minorities, but those people do their job with devotion. And you're going to have a restaurant and I'm telling you, restaurants are messy. They lose money. They have hard times with staff and they need big dumpsters behind them. I've been in the alley there all throughout the time the Guild was retrofitted. And you got a you got a bad situation for somebody that's an investor to to try to back this up. Because there's a lot of noise when you pick up dumpsters in the middle of the middle of the early morning. And I, I, I think restaurants are messy businesses. I think they want to get people picking up there. There are tons of money and giving it to the musicians all the time so they can keep great sound going. And, you know, it's legal to get high. So a lot of people are coming to the Guild in limousines or Ubers because they they go to the Guild stoned. And it's a great time. It's it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Lynn Bramlett, followed by Galaxy Starborn.
So good evening again. So I I live not that far from the place. And when the nativity has its carnival once, once a year, you know, it's, you can hear it. It's kind of interfering with sleep. Then you think, well, it's just once a year. But I can imagine something like that more often. And I tend to agree with the comments about even eleven o'clock, I think, is too late on what is a teacher's school night. I also want to say I have a sound meter on my phone and they may not be scientifically accurate, but a layperson can get a good read about sound. So people who are listening and concerned. I think the conversation brings up the need to update our noise element too. I believe the last time it was updated was two thousand and thirteen. And it's tied to the safety, the farmer's safety, which we're still under and conservation and open space. And I think it should be a standalone element. And these issues looked at, and I would say even for consistency, in the prior conversation, many people talked about noise and quality of life. And to me, a lot of these are similar. And I'm reminded of situations like Cafe Zoe where she wanted to have some outdoor music and and I I heard it and it was quite mild, but the neighbors didn't like it, didn't want it after eight. So it just seems as though we have broader issues here in our town and it's not necessarily consistent. I would ask if there's some way of trying it out for a week, maybe get some kind of tape that people could play that would simulate diners dining or I I think those things exist. You can get them and and see what it's like. And then just to finish up with the comment about sleeping and drinking, what a book I read not too long ago was called Why We Sleep. It's by a professor at Berkeley and he does an amazing job of bringing in evidence in a lay way. It's and drinking alcohol late at night definitely interferes with your sleep. And if you're not getting your sleep, it's shortening your life. I don't remember everything in the book, but you know, it's part of our quality of life here in town. So just some related comments.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Galaxy Starborn, followed by Adina Levin. And this will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing item I two.
Thank you so much for informing us of
You pull the microphone down. You just pull it down.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you. Got it. All right. Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight to talk about this important project. I moved into my neighborhood in late December and I just love it here and it's so peaceful and quiet. And it's been so fabulous to be so close to a downtown area and yet to have such a refuge at night. And so when I got the mailing that unfortunately didn't include like the exact hours of the business and whatnot, I did feel very concerned about the impact on my safe haven, my home that means so much to me. I feel grateful that there is a compromise. It sounds like it is in the works. And I do actually want to nonetheless express ongoing concern about the two AM finish or ending time. Seven nights a week, I believe. That nonetheless is potentially late for being close to a residential area. I do think it's one of the challenges that we face in community is how to address, how to balance everyone's needs and how to how I I personally always want to go for the win win. Not me versus you, but how can we all benefit and enhance each other's lives and 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 meet our core needs? So I will express ongoing concern about the two AM finish time. Residential parking could be impacted as well as as people attending are going to this establishment, you know, park on the on the street that is already happening with the Guild Theater and it may continue to happen even more with a new restaurant. You know, we don't currently have signs or, you know, a residential parking permit program. So that is something to consider. I think it may may perhaps be needed. Also, the just the sheer impact of of noise of people coming back to their cars late at night after having a good time and everybody's excited. And yet there are other residents who are trying to sleep. So I think that's a difficult, potentially difficult situation. Also, I just want to note on a logistical note, since there we currently have a city law of, you know, no parking on the street between two and five AM without a permit. However, as far as I know, there aren't any signs to that effect. So if this establishment closes at two AM and somebody stays till closing and then they go out to their car, maybe they're going to get a a ticket because they they get back at two, ten or two fifteen or whatever, and they didn't realize that that parking wasn't allowed between two and five AM without it without a permit. So it's something that logistically, I feel like if we are, even though I have concerns about the two AM time, if we are going with it, I think we're going to need more signs indicating between two and five AM, you know, a permit is required. And we may potentially need to look into a residential parking program. And I thank you very much for inviting us here.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Vicky Vasilekos.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. I live on just on the other side of downtown and I'm glad to hear about another restaurant and entertainment venue within walking distance from my home. I'm glad to hear about the compromise. It seems like has been reached in terms of the hours of operation and noise and you know, I can, I I certainly do not think I will be out until two AM ever, but could conceivably see, you know, staying a little after eleven, especially since it is walking distance from home. The comments that I wanted to make here, given this decent compromise direction is about the issues of potential parking. And there was also a little bit of a mention of loading and and loading zone questions. And for disclosure, I'm a former Complete Streets Commissioner, speaking for myself here and would encourage the City Council to direct further consideration of parking as well as any loading zone issues to the Complete Streets Commission for a staff to consider solutions and to have a venue for some public comment and discussion before things get brought to City Council. You know, it does seem like there may be some parking and circulation issues that would merit some discussion and thinking about thoughtful solutions. In the downtown Menlo Park area later in the evening, there is plentiful places to park that are not neighborhood streets and also don't block active transportation. So just Complete Streets and staff consideration can be helpful there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker will be Vicky Vasilekos.
Good evening. This is Vicky Voselakis. And I am a third of four generations in Menlo Park. My parents bought houses in the fifties in downtown Menlo Park. And I've resided in downtown for the last thirty plus years. And I can say that I'm very excited to see this restaurant coming to Menlo Park. Menlo Park has been very depressed in closed businesses over the last several years. So I have to say I look forward to having something at my back door rather than having to go up to Woodside or Redwood City to see live entertainment. So again, thank you for considering the project and hopefully we get to go to the new restaurant and listen to a little music. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I am seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Wilson, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you to everyone who spoke both in person and virtually this evening. And thank you to all of the community members who spent time to write us. We received many, 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 many emails on this topic. And I, for one, read them and I would imagine my colleagues also read them. So we want to let you know that even though we might not have heard everyone's testimony this evening, we have considered that. I'm actually going to go and kick off the the conversation here on the dais. I first want to start by thanking both the applicant, Mr. Alessandro, Mr. Dunlevy and the former, the Clockworks people. Thank you. And my, I hope I got everyone here. And my colleague, Councilmember Nash, I do want to disclose that I have had, I think it's called ex parte communications with the applicant prior to tonight. And I'm very pleased that a compromise was reached. I know. I think the sign of a good compromise is when everyone leaves a little unhappy. And so it can be difficult to strike the right balance in these situations. We know that I I kind of knew not everyone was going to be happy with where we were going to land. But as council members, our job is to really think through the project from many, many angles. Think about the possible unintended consequences, who's being affected, who's in the room during these decisions, who's not? What are possible externalities that need to be considered? What are guardrails that can be put in place? How is our police chief staffed up in a way to handle this new vibrancy that I think we all want and are very excited about? So I appreciate everyone who I've spoken to being along that journey with us. I appreciate the, the outdoor boundaries that have been established. And I believe just for clarification, the concept is that the last person seated outside can be at 10:00 PM. And that at 11:00 PM, it's assumed that everyone has come in from the cold, we'll just say. I feel like there's a, that's to me like a proactive guardrail as a reactive kind of backdrop. We also have the noise ordinance, which is 50 decibels after 10:00 PM. So we anticipate that that will not be violated. Having spoken to the police chief in quite a bit of detail, we do not think it's, and the applicant and I have had this discussion. It's on the police to come knocking on the door of Clockworks every night. And that the residents that live right down the street, it's not their responsibility to call every night. And I trust that our applicants bringing this project forward understand that and want to be good neighbors. So I have high confidence that with these measures in place, we're going to end up with a successful situation. If for the off, off, off chance, you know, things are going awry, which like I said, I have 95% confidence that they're going to be great. That, you know, we have, you know, health, safety, moral situations that the project and their use permit can be brought forward. I do not foresee that having to take place, but I just want to let community members who are concerned know that the city does have certain legislative powers to, to act if needed. I'm really excited about this project. I think that the, I just want to make clear that 2:00 AM is a by right condition for restaurants. So even though Menlo Park might not currently have any restaurants open to 2:00 AM, it's hypothetical that one could be open till 2:00 AM. So we cannot regulate that 2:00 AM restaurant time. We do have the drinking and the music and the outdoors. And we have had many, many conversations about what that looks like. I think that the applicant and his team are going to be considering, you know, what the market is going to bear. And I would be surprised if they're open every night till 2:00 AM. It's a big change from what we're used to in Menlo Park. So I think again, a lot of these conditions are kind of the outer boundaries if needed. And I'm feeling comfortable, given all of the conversations and all of the, the balancing of the needs, that I am happy to move forward with the compromise that Councilmember Nash and the applicant have reached in response to some of the comments. I'm sympathetic to all of your comments and like I said, we have some backstops if needed. The residential parking permit issue. Again, this kind of adds on to the list of things that we want staff to look into, but I would add this to the list. It does sound like it's time. And I think that's where I am. And I will turn it over to my colleagues to see where they're at. Anyone? Councilmember Combs.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Willison. You know, I think the Guild's addition to Menlo Park has almost been too good to be true. And has made us the envy of a number of communities along the peninsula and offering really vibrant and active live music venue. And, and I think that this project represents a really great compliment to the Guild. But that being said, that doesn't negate the concerns of residents. But I think it speaks to a debate and discussion and a conflict that we'll see more and more as there is a greater desire to have more housing throughout the city. I think one of the public commoners mentioned that BBC was a better spot because there are businesses all around. Well, actually now there's actually residences across the street from the, from the BBC and that complex. No, they're not, they're not, sir. I was on the Planning Commission when it came, so I think I know a little bit more about what's in that project than you. But, but yes, in, in the, in the Phil's, where the Phil's Coffee is, there, there are, there are apartments, there are residences in that building. So I, I'm sorry, you're not on a first term basis with the truth, but that's what it is. But in, in the same way with what we're experiencing with the Guild and those residences that are closer, closer are, are newer residences that were a part of a mixed-use project. Someone also mentioned that, that on Santa Cruz would be a better fit. We actually would like to see residences on Santa Cruz. It is actually in the downtown specific plan to have a retail office and residences on the top. Right? We haven't realized that yet, but it is very much what we've wanted to. And so what it speaks to is that as we grow, as we look for other places to have housing, we will see more of those conflicts that you see in more urban environments, especially as this moves into, into, like I say, into the downtown area. So I think it's a healthy discussion to have. As the mayor said, there are, there are levers which are available to, to, to residents in this, in this case. And, and appreciate Councilmembers Nash involvement with, with the applicants in this case and with, with residents to reach a compromise. But again, this, this is not going to be a one-off thing, like, right? All of those places where you think like something like this should be, where it won't impact residences, we will have residences. Just a couple of meetings ago, we had some students from Berkeley who, you know, produced designs for, for housing on, on the downtown parking lots. Right? And so there will be lots of noise issues there. And so I, I again, appreciate that all of the parties came to this discussion and were able to reach, reach a, we're able to reach, reach a compromise.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. Councilmember Door, would you like to go?
Sure. Thank you all for the folks who shared this evening, as well as folks who shared through the emails. It was really helpful to, to think about that and to collectively ideate on how do we create the vibrancy that we want for our community? How do we encourage economic development, encourage the arts and music, and encourage people to come and want to stay and exist in our community? I'm excited for this restaurant and bar. I'm excited for the opportunity to go to a show at the Guild and then in the night at the restaurant. I'm excited by the vibrancy as we think about the plans for downtown is more housing, more people, more businesses want to come. We can send good signals with the Guild and this Clockridge Restaurant and other things that are, you know, that make Menlo Park special. And will make other people want to come here. And just to emphasize, as I did in the last public hearing areas, that, you know, we care about keeping the sound at appropriate levels and that's why that ordinance exists. And I'm excited to, to see how in this first year, I think there was something in the agenda that said, you know, in the first year review and see if there are any issues with that. And so I, I'm grateful for those.
Actually, if I can interrupt you, Councilmember Door, I believe the staff recommendations and Ms. Chow, Ms. Khan, maybe you can clarify, are to remove that condition, given that there's health, safety and other mechanisms. Ms. Chow, did you want to speak to that?
Sure. I, I thank you, Deanna Chow, Assistant Community Development Director. Thank you, Mayor Willison and members of the City Council. So yes, what is presented in the packet this evening is a staff recommendation, which would remove the Planning Commission recommendation because we were suggesting and recommending that the planning, excuse me, the City Council support the 11:00 PM stop for live entertainment. I believe that condition from the Planning Commission would still be removed with the items that Councilmember Nash identified, and we can review those and how we would modify the conditions of approval and the resolution to reflect that.
Thank you for that clarification. I fully support the negotiated space that Councilmember Nash and the applicant came to. And that is all. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. Is there any way to put that up on the screen?
The answer is yes, and they are working on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just quickly want to respond to one public comment about kicking some portion of this issue to the Complete Streets Commission. I don't have an issue with the Complete Streets Commission looking at this overall area, as long as there is no delay in this specific project. But if they want to look at, you know, whether it's, it's the live possible residential parking and other sort of issues, I'm open to that. Again, as long as there, there is no delay.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. And now we can see the negotiated agreement that has been discussed. Okay, Vice Mayor Taylor, I believe the floor is yours.
Thank you. And, and thank you for, for putting this up on the screen and working on it during the meeting. So I really appreciate that. Initially, I had some clarifying questions, but reading this is actually answering that for me. Who will be doing the review? Is that on the city or is that on the applicant?
So Vice Mayor Taylor, there will be no review anymore. That is a condition that is being removed at this point.
Okay.
But as, as mentioned, there remains our noise ordinance. And if things go awry, there are other mechanisms that the city has and that residents have to alert us, but we hopefully don't anticipate that being an issue.
And that is the 50 decibels?
So actually, I shouldn't speak. I should let staff speak to this. I'm not a planning expert or a legal expert. Does someone on staff want to address that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. So there is the noise ordinance, which is in chapter 8.06. And so it would be regulated. There's the daytime hours and then the nighttime hours. So in the daytime hours, it would be the 60 decibels. And then starting after 10:00 PM, it would be reduced down to 50 decibels. And that would be in every day, 365 days of the year. So that is a standard noise requirement outside of this permit here.
Thank you. And I have another question that actually with the, the alcohol permits, and this is kind of a general question because very few times has an alcohol permit actually come to the City Council. So can someone on staff just explain to me like what the difference is versus having something as a part of the administrative review versus having an independent alcohol permit request?
Councilmember Taylor, yes, so the onsite consumption of alcohol usually is an administrative permit that the planning staff reviews then is directed to the Community Development Director for approval. In this instance, this project did have other entitlements that they were proposing, which is why we had the ability to bundle it all in together and bring it forward as a use permit for review.
Thank you. And so if it's not bundled, then who does the approval?
That would be through the administrative permit, so it would be done by the Community Development Director.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, great. And I just also want to report that in my conversations with the applicant, we also looped in the police chief and they seemed to really hit it off. So I think they're going to be exchanging numbers and really, you know, again, working to be good community members and to have those open lines of communication with residents, community members and whatnot. So is there anything else that anyone would like to say or does someone want to make a motion? Oh, Vice Mayor Taylor, I see your hand raised.
Thank you. And, and that is, and this is definitely not something that's needed immediately. However, considering the last application that the council had an opportunity to weigh in on, I am asking for support to have a heat map that shows all the different establishes in Menlo Park, whether it be a restaurant or a gas station, that has a liquor license.
Councilmember Combs?
Just, you're talking about onsite consumption and also takeaway or, or?
Both.
Both. Okay.
Thank you.
I, I have no objection. I'm not going to be the one doing the map, but whoever does it, I want to make sure they know exactly what, what you wanted.
Thank you.
If, if it's an easy thing to do, I'm in support. If it's taking a lot of staff time, I know that staff is extremely busy. So if, if, I guess City Manager Murphy, do you have any thoughts? Is it just, is it a simple thing?
I, I can look into that and get back to the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Door?
Yeah, I, Vice Mayor Taylor, I'm curious if you could share why you'd like that heat map?
Well, I, as I stated earlier, there was one example that we've had since I've been on council where a alcohol permit came to the City Council. And so I'm curious as to, one, how many liquor licenses we have. And then two, just thinking about folks who have applied and were denied. Did it have to do with geography, where they were located? Were they close enough to an establishment that already had a license? So it's just looking at the city as a whole to see where alcohol is sold.
I, I would hope that, that if other folks on the dais want to support that, that it, I would not want that to take up much time at all for the staff. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to make a motion. Councilmember Nash?
I would like to move forward with the modifications as described on the screen.
And I will second that.
And prior to anything else, I'm looking to the city attorney, because I believe there was one other change to the resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. There was an interest in removing pages 19 and 20 of the resolution, which is a narrative description of the proposed project, some of which narrative would now conflict with the revised conditions of approval. The, the narrative project description is not necessary for the resolution. So if the council wishes to remove those pages, then your motion should include that.
I would like to do that. Thank you, since it conflicted with what we've just described.
Okay, I'm seeing a nod from the applicant, which is a great sign. And again, I'm not seeing giant smiles because not everyone's getting what they want here. But I think we've come to a good place. So, so we have a first from Councilmember Nash with that clarification, a second from myself, City Clerk Karen, please.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. So there is a motion on the floor by Mayor Willison and a second by City Councilmember Nash to adopt the modified resolution of approval, adopting findings for the project use permit and architectural control, including project conditions of approval as displayed on the screen. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash, Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Door.
Yes.
Mayor Willison.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, congratulations. I look forward to attending your live acoustic unamplified venue and toasting there. So thank you. All right. With that, we are moving on to I three, which is our final public hearing. Consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve a request for revision to an existing planned development permit to reduce the minimum required lot size, reduce the number of required onsite parking spaces from 360 to 315 spaces, and modify percentage-based development standards, e.g. building coverage and floor area ratio associated with the reduction in site area. And to introduce this item is once again, our Associate Planner Fatine Khan, please.
Good evening, Mayor Willison.
Good evening, Mayor Willison, honorable councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. Here I am again, Associate Planner Fatin Khan. This time, I'll be presenting seven hundred to eight hundred El Camino, commonly, El Camino Real, commonly known as Menlo Station, for a revision to an existing planned development permit. Next slide, please. A planned development permit, or PDP in short, was approved for the Menlo Station development on January eighth nineteen eighty for a one-story retail mall and a four-story office building. Revisions to existing PDPs require recommendation from Planning Commission to the city council for changes that involve land uses, expansion, or intensification of development, or a relaxation in the standards of development. The city council should review the Planning Commission's recommendation and make a decision on whether to approve the proposed revisions. Next slide, please. The project site is near the intersection of Ravenswood and El Camino Real. The purchase highlighted in yellow in the image that we see would require a revision to the planned development permit, which would allow for the purchase of the portion highlighted of the existing site, which is currently used for parking by the city of Menlo Park for the Middle Avenue Caltrain Crossing project, which in turn would reduce the required lot size and parking, and modify percentage-based development standards. Example, building coverage and floor area ratio based on the reduced lot size. The revision to the planned development permit would not result in any increase in gross floor area or any modifications to the existing buildings on the project site. Next slide, please. The request for the revision to the existing PDP include reduction in minimum lot size, required onsite parking spaces, and modifications to percentage-based development standards associated with the reduction in the site area. As noted earlier, existing gross floor area will remain unchanged. Only percentage-based development standards, such as building coverage, would change from the reduction in lot size, as we can see here in the table. Next slide, please. At its meeting on May first, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed revisions to the PDP and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed revisions to the city council. Staff recommends that city council consider the Planning Commission's recommendation and adopt a resolution to approve the revisions to the planned development permit tonight. With that, I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. So again, this is a public hearing, but there is no appellant or applicant here. So are there any questions from the city council before we open the public hearing? Okay, I would like to open the public hearing. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on our public hearing item I three, consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve a request for a revision to an existing planned development permit to reduce the minimum required lot size, reduce the number of required onsite parking spaces from three hundred and sixty to three hundred and fifteen spaces, and modify percentage-based development standards. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to the clerk's desk. Final call for public comment on public hearing item I three. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So I will now close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion. This is pretty much a technical step on our way towards getting ready for the Middle Avenue undercrossing. If anyone has comments, great. If not, I will entertain a motion.
I would be happy to follow forward with a motion to approve. Okay.
I'm seeing a comment, but for a second. So Councilmember Nash, do you want to?
I just want to state that if there's ever any opportunity to increase the pedestrian and bicycle access from Middle Plaza to the Caltrain Station in Menlo Park along the tracks, that would be very, very beneficial. Thank you.
Great point. Does anyone want a second? Councilmember Door's motion? Okay, seeing a second from Councilmember.
Second.
Great. We have a first and a second.
Thank you. Let me just take a peek at how this motion needs to be phrased. All right, so I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Door, a second by City Councilmember Nash to adopt a resolution approving revisions to an existing planned permit at seven hundred to eight hundred El Camino Real to reduce the lot size, reduce the number of required onsite parking spaces from three hundred and sixty to three hundred and fifteen, and modify percentage-based development standards based on the reduction, reduced lot size to allow for the future purchase of portion of the existing site currently used for parking by the city of Menlo Park and for Middle Avenue Caltrain Crossing project. I think that concludes the motion. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
City Council, Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Door.
Yes.
Mayor Willison.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe before we move on, we need to extend the meeting. So is there a acclamation nodding for, I'm seeing at least three of us nodding. So we do have two regular business items and some informational items. But we'll see how this goes. So. Oh, okay, so we are moving on to J, regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is J one. Adopt a resolution to amend resolution number six, seven, three, eight to remove the drought surcharge that corresponds to stage-two drought measures for Menlo Park municipal water customers. Bills rescind stage-two drought measures if and when the state board, oh, it's getting late. When the state water board ends its drought regulations that require Menlo Park municipal water to implement drought measures in its water shortage contingency plan. And to introduce this item is our senior civil engineer, Pam Lo. Good evening, Ms. Lo.
Good evening. Just give me a minute here. I just have to log in really quickly. Sorry about that. Okay, I'm finally ready. Good evening, Mayor Willison, Vice Mayor Taylor, and city council members. Tonight, I will presenting the item on the drought. We are requesting approval for two items. The first item for your approval is to remove the drought surcharge for Menlo Park municipal water customers. Last May, the city council approved a stage-two drought surcharge in response to the state water board requiring each water agency implement stage, stage-two drought measures. The surcharge is one dollar and forty cents per CCF. And it became effective last August. The surcharge is calculated based on total metered water use, and it is itemized separately on customers' monthly water bills. For the twelve-month period between April twenty twenty-two and March twenty twenty-three, Menlo Park municipal water customers reduced their water use overall by eighteen percent compared to pre-drought water demands. This surpassed the state's goal to reduce water use by fifteen percent, and it surpassed S F P U C's goal to reduce water use by eleven percent. Almost every customer category reduced water use as shown in table one in the staff report. Staff's recommendation is to remove the drought surcharge on Menlo Park municipal water bills retroactively to May first. If approved, we will work with the billing contractor to issue customer credits. The second item for your approval is to rescind drought to, I'm sorry, stage-two drought measures if and when the state water board ends its stage-two drought regulations. In May twenty twenty-two, the state adopted regulations that required water agencies implement stage-two drought measures per their water shortage contingency plans. The state also added another regulation to ban irrigating non-functional turf for commercial, industrial, and institutional areas, including common areas of homeowner associations. These regulations are due to expire next month on June tenth, unless the state modifies, extends, or ends them. In May twenty twenty-two, the city council adopted resolution number six, seven, three, eight that implemented stage-two drought measures listed in Menlo Park Municipal Waters' adopted water shortage contingency plan. These included a two-day-per-week watering schedule and a requirement for newly constructed homes and businesses to irrigate with drip or micro spray only. The resolution also banned irrigating non-functional turf. In March, the governor issued an executive order to lift the requirement that water agencies implement stage-two drought measures. However, the state water board must take action in order for these regulations to become law. Last Thursday, on May eighteenth, the state notified water agencies that they plan to extend the ban on irrigating non-functional turf for up to one additional year to June twenty twenty-four. Staff's recommendation is to rescind stage-two drought measures if and when the state water board ends its requirements that water agencies implement stage-two drought measures. This is likely to occur as early as next month on June tenth, when the stage-two drought regulations expire. In the future, if the state water board implements other drought regulations not currently in effect, staff will return to city council to take any necessary actions. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Lo. City Clerk Karen, will you please call for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item J one, adopt a resolution to amend resolution number six, seven, three, eight to remove the drought surcharge that corresponds to stage-two drought measures for Menlo Park municipal water customers. Bills rescind stage-two drought measures if or when the state water board ends its drought regulations that require Menlo Park municipal water to implement drought measures in its water shortage contingency plan. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on regular business item J one. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So I will now open it up for city council question, discussion, or emotion.
Well, this is one of my favorite topics, so I have to share.
City Councilmember Door, please.
Thank you. I'm also wearing the hat of as a city council person from Menlo Park, I'm also our city's representative to Bosca, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. That's a mouthful. And so have been talking with other agencies and commissions, utilities about the the situation with the drought currently. And it's really exciting that we had all these happy, exciting for water, bad in other reasons. As we know, the atmospheric rivers brought a lot of rain to our state, which was really needed to reduce the drought status across the state. But something about climate change, I don't think that's always the right word. I think a better word might be climate weirding, because some years can be really, really wet, and some years can be really, really dry. And overall, what the state is saying is that we will experience more, this variability can create longer and more severe droughts for the state. And that will continue to put pressures on our water supply. And so for that reason, thinking about how we will continue to see potentials of drought coming forward, you know, in the coming years, as well as the opportunity to help residents save money by reducing how much water they're using. I would like to propose seeing if we can keep the option of limiting to two days of watering per week, as well as keeping the drip irrigation or hand watering for newly constructed homes. In part because the opportunity to continue helping people save money, as well as save this really important resource. And I know also that Menlo Park, we don't have separate metering for our irrigation or indoor use. But overall, irrigation is a huge part of residential water use generally. It's estimated that in California, landscape irrigation accounts for forty to sixty percent of all water use. And drip irrigation over normal spray irrigation can reduce water use by thirty to seventy percent on that irrigated land. And so it seems like a really neat opportunity to continue aligning on those opportunities. And so that is what I would propose. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Door. So there are two resolutions. There's two actions that we're being looking to take. So one is to rescind the surcharge or to, so are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I'm very excited to rescind that surcharge. But on the second one, about the two items, and you can also see that on page J dash one point three five, if you're looking at the agenda.
So I'd be curious to hear staff's perspective on Councilmember Door's idea. And are we allowed to do that? To be honest, it's late, and I wasn't expecting that. It's a very thoughtful proposal. I don't know if I'm prepared to wrap my head around that right now, to be honest. But I'd love to hear from staff what they think about that.
So the city council can actually keep any of the regulations that are currently in effect. You can also create your own that are not currently implemented, so there's no limitations. We can keep the two-day-a-week watering schedule. I must admit, I think we may be one of the few agencies that would keep a restriction on watering once the drought, you know, because I believe everybody will be lifting their stage-two drought measures. So we may be the only city that does that. But we can keep the micro spray, micro spray drip requirement for new homes and businesses. It's pretty much whatever you decide to do.
And as a reminder, we have four water districts that service the city of Menlo Park. About half of our city is operated by Cal Water. So is Cal Water rescinding their drought to thing? So people, like, I'm Cal Water, but down the street and south of Seminary, they are municipal water. So could I be having a party with my watering while my neighbors are restricted?
That's absolutely right. There's actually multiple agencies that supply water. At this point in time, I do not know what Cal Water is planning to do. I do, I do know that there's several Bosca agencies that are planning to lift their drought to and just allow people to water. But there, there are, if you look at that page, let me see, attachment E on the staff report, it's page J dash one point three five. You'll see in the middle shaded column, it shows the wasteful water practices. Those will remain in place until the end of December. Those will remain in place until the end of December. And so all the agencies will be required to keep those. However, if the stage-two drought responses are lifted by other agencies, most likely they will eliminate the two-day-a-week water requirement. So you may have neighbors that live across the street from each other with completely different. One will be able to water anytime. And for example, if we keep the two-day watering, then that would be different.
Thank you. So I see Vice Mayor Taylor. In general, I'm supportive of ways to conserve water. I think I'd like to have a more thoughtful discussion about this and implications to kind of our community-wide and making sure people aren't confused. And so is this coming back to us in December, then you said, or is this just, when will the next time we, when is the next time we're to consider water-related conservation issues?
So the state water board can implement any regulation at any time. So I can't actually tell you when that will be. But if they do implement any new regulation or change the current regulations, we will definitely return to council as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you. I see Vice Mayor Taylor with her hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. I just wanted to add that I support water-saving actions from our residents. And I'm concerned that we don't have consistency with four different water agencies.
Thank you. Councilmembers Nash or Combs?
Yeah, I think either we're all in this together or we're not. I wouldn't understand why for those municipal water customers of which I am one, we would put or keep restrictions on watering, especially since we're not really enforcing it in any real way. While others, other cities or other Bosca agencies didn't have it, let alone different agents, different residents within Menlo Park. I think we're all buying hetchy water. It's all hetchy water. If we all adopted these conservation measures together, and I don't think it, I don't think restricting those municipal water customers would make, to me personally, a lot of sense and actually be lead to some confusion.
Councilmember Nash?
So question to staff, whether we can, what is state of affairs with the new homes? Is that something that's applied water-saving, I'm sorry, it's late. Are water-saving devices required for new homes across all the water districts? And if not, could we do that? Because it seems, I guess where I'm coming from is, yeah, I find it difficult to impose the two-day-a-week watering on one district, but not with the other. But I'm wondering to me if we could do something with the new homes and do that equally across all the districts. I would certainly support that.
So we do currently have multiple water conservation programs in place, and they do, many of them do run across the different Bosca agencies. So that would include many of the agencies here in Menlo Park. We do offer free water-saving devices such as low-flow showerheads, faucet, air raiders for the bathroom and kitchen, and toilet leak detection tablets. And those are available free to our residents. And I believe the the other agencies also have programs in place to offer free devices, too.
What about with new homes? If I understood correctly, and I'm not finding it on here right now, new homes are required to, currently required to install water-saving irrigation systems.
That's correct. And it's on the table that's on the screen at the very top. It's crossed off. It's the middle bullet on the right-hand column. Newly constructed homes and buildings must irrigate with drip or micro spray only. That is a current regulation that we do implement.
Is that something that's either is currently applied across all the districts, or the city could apply it across all the districts as part of our new construction?
Good evening, Tanisha Werner, Assistant Public Works Director. It's applied to everyone in the state. It's a state-level requirement.
So will it be rescinded or will it remain a state law?
So all new development is required to comply with low-impact development, and that is consistent with water savings, irrigation savings, and that is consistent. So that's not changing.
Sorry, I am also now a little bit confused. Is there a way, because right now this is saying that that's effective till June 10th, but then after that it'll be taken away. Is there a way that Menlo Park, independent of that decision, could continue to have the choice that newly constructed homes and buildings would have to irrigate with drip or micro spray only across all districts within the city of Menlo Park?
Yeah, so thank you, councilmembers, for the question. I think we know for certain we can impose the regulation within Menlo Park Municipal Water Customers based on our authority as the water provider. I think what we would need to look into is whether we have the legal ability to do so as a condition of approval or some other mechanism in the zoning code regulations. There are currently regulations for water conservation for new development of a certain size, commercial areas and the bayfront area in particular. But I don't know offhand if we have the authority to do so across the city. So what I might suggest is you could tonight, if you wanted to maintain the micro spray or drip requirement, I think that's much easier for us to track and enforce for Menlo Park Municipal Water Customers than would be the watering restriction change. And then we can do some investigation. And the next time we bring an item back to you on water regulations, give you that update is common.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And I also echo what folks in the dais shared about not wanting to create inequitable differences between how folks can use utilities across the city. And so I will hold on this one and will very eagerly await that time and place to talk more with you all about it. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Dorr, for enlightening, like elevating this topic. And while we might not be getting to it tonight, you've definitely put it in our heads. So it sounds like there's consensus then around both removing the surcharge and rescinding the drought to measures. Does somebody want to make a motion? I'll make a motion. Do I need to move each of those separately, or is it, can I move everything together?
It's okay if we take them as one.
One big motion to do the staff recommendations, please.
Can I second?
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Willison, second by City Councilmember Dorr, to adopt a resolution to amend Resolution Number 6738 to remove the drought surcharge that corresponds to stage-two drought measures for Menlo Park Municipal Water Customers' bills starting May 1, and to rescind stage-two drought measures when the state water board modifies or ends its drought regulations that require Menlo Park Municipal Water Customers to implement drought measures in its water shortage contingency plan. Any further city council questions or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Mayor Willison?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to our second regular business item, which is J2, Resolution to Reduce the Utility User Tax. And to introduce this item is our Administrative Services Director, Brittany Mello. Good evening, Ms. Mello. Thank you for hanging in there with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is my pleasure. Okay, so the item before you this evening is a resolution to reduce the utility users' tax to 0%. The utility users' tax became effective in November 2006, imposing a communication users' tax, electricity users' tax, gas tax, and a water users' tax. On April 26, the San Mateo County Superior Court issued a statement of decision in the case of David Fogel et al. versus the city of Menlo Park, finding that the utility users' tax terminated December 2016 because the city had not made requisite findings to continue the tax. While the court has not issued a final judgment or injunction in validating the tax or ordering the city to cease collection of the tax, the city anticipates that the court may subsequently do so. Therefore, staff recommends the city council reduce the tax to 0%. This would be effective for a period of no more than 12 months pursuant to the municipal code, at which time the council would reconsider the tax rate. Pursuant to the California Public Utilities Code, following adoption of the resolution this evening, staff will provide notice to the utility providers, and the reduction would become effective on the earliest date possible, but no later than 60 days following this notification. This reduction would remove approximately 1.6 million in annual revenue from the general fund moving forward. With that, that concludes my presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mello. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for a public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on regular business item J2, Resolution to Reduce the User Utility Tax. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card and return it to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on item J2, Resolution to Reduce the User Utilities Tax. Utility user tax, my apologies. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Is there any discussion or a motion regarding the user utility tax?
I would make a motion to take it to zero.
Oh, I see Vice Mayor Taylor, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Dorr, a second by Vice Mayor Taylor, to adopt a resolution reducing the utility users' tax to 0% pursuant to Section 3.14.130 of the Menlo Park Municipal Code. Any further city council question or discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. So I do think it's worth pointing out that you know, this decision we have to make tonight is based on residents losing faith and trust with the city council, which made a decision to give staff direction to use the user utility tax in a way it was never intended to be used by the voters who approved it. And so maybe there is some process issue that became determinative in this court case. But in that case, in that scenario, it would be an environment in which we as community leaders could go back to residents and look for an opportunity to reinstate it. Because $1.5 million is not an insignificant amount of money. But I think we have to be honest in saying that that environment doesn't exist. We can't go back to residents and have a discussion about this. Because it was already, we've already had a scenario where a majority of the council had expressed an interest in using it in a way, like I said, that it was never intended. And so this is what happens when I think agenda gets in the way of actually trying to represent and serve the residents who elected us. There is now $1.6 million going forward of revenue that will not be coming to the city. And we started this council session off with the employees of the city saying that like they think that they deserve more. And the city is in a situation because of this council action where it will have less, and it will have less in the tune of $1.6 million for the foreseeable future. And that, to me, I think is worth noting and very disappointing.
Thank you. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Mayor Willison?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. We're moving on to K informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items, K1, City Council Agenda Topics, K2, Progress Report on Implementing the 2030 APP or Climate Action Plan, K3, the Menlo Park Community Campus Preliminary Staffing, Operations, and Programming Plan Considerations. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in chambers, please complete a speaker card and return it to the clerk's desk. And our first speaker will be John McKenna. And John, if you can let us know which item you are speaking on, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. My name is John McKenna, and I am honored to serve on the Environmental Quality Commission, but I am speaking tonight as an individual. It's late, so I will keep this short. But I did want to make a brief comment on item K2 on the agenda. I want to thank the city for rightfully declaring a climate emergency in 2019 and for adopting a climate action plan with the bold goal of being net zero by 2030. The city has also passed reach codes requiring electrification in new buildings. And the city has been diligently working towards achieving the various goals outlined in the Climate Action Plan since its adoption. However, recent developments outside our city have put some planned actions on pause. This, I would like to point out, is exactly what the fossil fuel industry wants, delay. After decades of denying the existence of climate change, followed by additional decades of seeding doubt as to its product being the primary cause, the industry is currently in the delay mode of its strategy. Unfortunately, it is working and resulting in more damage to our lives and our planet. We know that the burning of fossil fuels is warming our planet to dangerous levels, and it must end as soon as is humanly possible. I ask Menlo Park to continue to be a leader on climate action and to accelerate its efforts. As the author, educator, and environmentalist Bill McKibben wrote, quote, "Winning slowly is the same as losing," unquote. The fight against climate change is simply one we cannot lose. Our children and future generations are counting on us to return the planet that we are borrowing from them in a livable condition. Many of us are here to help the city in these efforts, and we look forward to continuing our work together to make progress and implement both mitigation and adaptation solutions with the urgency demanded. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the dais about the informational items? Any burning comments or questions at 11:32 PM? Councilmember Dorr?
Just to note, I know right now the climate adaptation section on develop a climate adaptation plan to protect the community from sea level rise and flooding. Moving forward, I'm eager to ensure we're thinking about climate adaptation in all its forms, including what do we do when there's wildfire smoke and that's affecting folks? What do we do when there is water insecurity and things like that? And so excited to start the conversation with these really important areas of sea level rise and flooding, and also there are other issues that we can continue to work on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. Okay, we're moving on then to item L, the City Manager's Report. City Manager Justin Murphy, please.
Yes. The one thing I'd
the, the one thing I'd like to just, uh, report and announce is to make sure everybody's aware that next, um, next Tuesday, there's going to be a special council meeting. It's a special joint meeting with the Menlo Park Fire Protection District. So a week from today, the day after, um, day after the Memorial Day holiday, a bit, there'll be a joint session here at the, uh, city council chambers. I believe a six o'clock start. So that's a joint session of the city council and the Menlo Park Fire Protection District.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. We're now moving on to city council member reports. Are there any reports from city council members since the May ninth meeting? Um, I do want to report that we came in second place for the Bike to Wherever Day pledge contest. Gilroy beat us. Um, I'm still very proud of our biking community, and I encourage anyone, you can bike wherever, whenever, so it's not just once a year. Um, so I look forward to seeing you out there. Um, anyone else have any reports? Councilmember Combs.
Gilroy, can we get a recount on that?
Gilroy has a very strong bike advocate on council, I have to say. I'm not seeing any reports, so, um, unless anyone has, I'm going to just adjourn the meeting at eleven thirty-four P M. Thank you, everyone.